With the hour being after six forty-five, having a quorum, open the hearing, planning board meeting of September twenty-first. First item of business is minutes of August seventeenth. Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to accept.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained.
Abstained. Didn't come out of watching.
Okay. So four, zero, one. All right. Six forty, what? Abstained? John Murtaugh. All right. Six forty-five zoning, Pat Duchesne.
Hello, uh, Mr. Board, thanks for having me. Uh, I'm here today to kind of discuss the MBTA zoning initiative. So if any of you are familiar, back in two thousand twenty-one, the state passed the economic development bill. Along with that came from changes to the zoning act, one of which was to create a new section of the zoning act, section three A. Three A essentially was to create a multi-family by right provision for communities that are designated as MBTA communities. Some of those criteria goes with that it needs to be no, uh, need to be zoned for a location no less than a half mile from a transit station, no less than fifteen dwellings per acre, uh, be non-age restrictive and suitable for families. So since that time, uh, DHCD has kind of picked up the slack in terms of writing guidelines. There's a whole provision, um, that I provided you in, uh, in a memo just to kind of go over the different details and explanations of those guidelines. So rather than going over in the nitty gritty, my purpose of meeting you with the board today is that ultimately this is something we would deem as like a planning initiative. And so with something that's going to be such a, um, what, one, it's something that's mandatory, but also something that is going to bring such a kind of a significant change, it does need direction from a board. And so meeting with the planning board today, I wanted to first kind of bring that opportunity to the planning board, uh, to hear the board's feedback, if this is something that, uh, I can work with the board with, or if there's another direction that the board feels that that is suitable, whether it's a steering committee or anything of that nature. Ultimately, though, it probably needs ownership of a board rather than just myself to make sure that there's guidance, uh, in how this zoning is created. And so that's, uh, that's the gist of it. I can go into any details if, if the board wants to get into it, but I know you have a busy night, so.
Okay, uh, I just want to clear up something.
Yep.
We named the planning board, that's given by master general laws. It doesn't mean we do planning. It means we do subdivision control and, uh, we do happen to have site plan, which is not under master general laws. So it's a misnomer that we own the zoning book. Actually, if you think about it, if we didn't do site plan, we wouldn't even be in the zoning book. We'd only be in our subdivision rules and regs and all everything under master general laws, under whatever, it's chap eighty-one. So just to get that-
Mr. Chairman, could I just make a statement?
Phil, this, it's not in our purview, plus it's not in our, uh, what do you call it? It's not town charter either.
Well, on the webpage where we have a, um, a page, duties of the planning board, it mentions-
I don't know, I'm not familiar with that, because I-
Yeah, it's on our webpage.
Well, guess what, guess what, whoever put it on, didn't put it on through us, because I've been doing this for a long time and never came through us.
And I just want to read something-
What?
From the planning board resource book. Um, so it says, um, "The important task of some, oh, I'm sorry, in Massachusetts, the planning board is charged with planning for the future growth, development, and preservation of the community's land and use resources."
In some towns, is that what you said? In some towns, it's not this one.
In Massachusetts, the planning board is charged with planning for the future growth, development, and preservation of the community's land use resources. This important task is oftentimes the most neglected task of many planning boards, as many planning boards are consumed by the permitting of projects and approval of subdivisions in our projects.
Is that, is that a master general law or is that someone's opinion?
Well, this is a, a guidance from, um-
It's a guidance, it's somebody's opinion, okay? Um, but what we have in this town is we do have something called the housing partnership. And the housing partnership is all about creating new housing. So to me, this is what that's about, correct?
The housing is-
A little more comprehensive than that.
But it's all about creating more housing. Isn't the goal of this to create more housing, fifteen houses per acre?
Well, really to zone for it. There's no mandate to actually construct, but to your point, housing, multifamily housing-
This is, the housing is-
is a component of it.
Housing has driven this whole thing from the state, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, so wouldn't that be smarter to have the housing partnership do it?
I think, I mean, that's a zoning article. I mean, to your point-
No, the housing partnership, they're appointed by the selectmen, just like they've been sponsored a few years ago. They, I would think they'd bring it forward, your group, Phil, right?
I'm not on the housing partnership anymore. I, I'm off.
Well, anyway, but that's the point of housing partnership. We're the planning board, okay? So it, to me, it makes more sense coming that way than it does. I'm not, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm not doing it, because first off, all we have is Kate, she's not even full-time. We have no resources. No, no, you don't work for us. You have another master, not us. Right? So if I call, I need this, and Jim Johnson calls, you ain't calling me back.
I would say this is pretty important, though.
No, but my point, it's, I'm one of five here, but it, to me, this would seem, why else did we create a housing partnership? It's about housing in the community and everything else. To me, that's, seems to where it belongs.
I mean, if that's, if that's, if that's your opinion-
That's my opinion, but-
It's your opinion, that's fine.
Okay, well, I'll ask John. I'll start here. John, what do you think?
Well, I hadn't thought of it before, but it does make some sense. Eventually, it would have to be, uh, involved with us probably because of the zoning overlay district, whatever. You're gonna want input on that, probably.
Yeah, so obviously, housing partnership could be a route. I think another route that would be beneficial would having support from the planning board as a steering, it's a steering committee of some sort. I think the direction of, at least some contingency of a planning board would be helpful for this.
Okay, I went through, I can't say it, in the tennis courts, by a lot of people who were trying to put stuff that, and where are they now in the housing partnership? They wanted housing. This, to me, is what they should be springboarding off, and now there's nobody around, Phil doesn't even want to do it anymore.
Wait, wait.
But it's coming back at us.
I, I wouldn't want to say it that way. First of all, the housing partnership worked very hard in trying to get inclusionary zoning bylaw passed, and I think in some ways, people got a little burned out because, um, it was, it was a very difficult process, and there was a lot of, a lot of questions that came at the very end, which made it more difficult for those to answer.
Okay, the questions come from me, and I, you know, and burnt out, Phil, either you're committed or you're not. I burn out, then don't ever volunteer for something if you're burnt out.
But I don't think it matters what happened in the past. What matters more right now-
No, I think it matters what, we have a housing partnership. I've said my piece.
What matters today is that we have an opportunity as a town. We have this MBTA law. Um, it's important, I think, for the planning board to be part of that. I don't think maybe just the only thing, but this, this gets into the whole, how do we view the whole town? So, so doing planning isn't just now doing piecemeal, you know, something over here. And that's where the housing partnership, we're just doing one small part of that. This is an opportunity to do it right and to look and say, you know, where do we want our town to go, to be, it can build off the master plan. And I think as, you know, we, we may not have a lot of resources, but we need to be part of that discussion because we are responsible for the, the, the zoning bylaws. We're not only the ones, but we have-
We're not responsi-, you know, if, you're reading something, someone's opinion. You read the town bylaw and you read master general laws. It doesn't mention us owning the zoning book.
It says that, well, it says that the zoning, um, that the planning board is responsible for reviewing and voting on all bylaws.
Yeah, that's master general law, public hearing, public hearing. That's, yeah, but we get it from the selectmen, we get it from zoning board, and get it from individual, and even us, so.
But if you read, I, I looked at several other towns on their, their mission for the planning board, and almost universally, they have the planning board as being the body to have some responsibility, because some board has to be looking over the overall plan of the town. It can't just be done piecemeal. Um, so I think, I think this is an opportunity, maybe as, as Patrick mentioned, it could be a steering committee joint with, um, the, the select board, joint with other boards, but this is, again, we want to make sure that we do this right. Um, I, I want to thank Patrick for all the research he's been doing, because it is a, it is a complicated, I'm reading the, the interpretation that's come back out of the, out of the state. And I think we need to be a part of that.
I've also done a little research, and a lot of these are not necessarily going to planning board, the selectmen are doing, and sometimes they appoint committees to do them.
Yeah, and that may be what comes out of this, but we need to be part of that.
Okay, but I, okay, I, you know where I stand. John, what do you think?
Well-
Either, it's gonna be, either we're all in, that's the way it's gonna be. It's gonna get, am I gonna say it nicely? It's gonna get dumped on us. So we go all in or we're all out.
The housing partnership does seem that they may be more in line with what this is looking for rather than the planning board.
Okay, Kate?
So Pat, it's a, from what I gather and from what you've said and given us, it's a series of zoning amendments or zoning rewrites that have to occur.
Yeah, in theory, that's the way you could go. The, not to dive too much into it, but the one way that I think would be more practical would be as a zoning overlay. Just, it, it's a cleaner way of, of doing something like this.
Um, so I do have concerns with us spearheading it, and the reason I say that is because of our resources available, but I think we ultimately have a hand in it because we hold the public hearings. So I think one way or another, we're involved. I don't want to see it, I want to see enough time dedicated to it, and I'm afraid if we just run with it, we all, we don't have a staff. Yes, we have you to fall back on, but you have other jobs too, that you do. And I don't want it done less than it should be. I guess that's the best, I want, I want it done the best way it can possibly be done.
We agree.
So I hesitate to say we should take it on, but I do feel we have to have involvement somehow. I'm not sure exactly, you know, the way that should happen, but, um, because we hold the public hearings and we're going to have a say in it, you don't want to do it all and then come back and have a say, oh, yeah, we hate it. Do you know what I mean, after you put all that time in? So, um, I do think it should be focused on by someone else, but maybe we could have some reporting back to us so we could give, instead of you just coming at the end and having it possibly have us agree or disagree or be split. I think that we should have some collaboration and back and forth so that we are ultimately working together, if not spearheading the whole thing.
No, I think that's, I think that's a really good statement in the sense that part of the reason of having a, a board take ownership rather than Pat Duchesne just going and making a zoning amendment is the sounding, this having a sounding board. And I think, you know, whether it's the planning board or coming back to the planning board periodically, as you mentioned, if that's a route, I think that's important because ultimately, we want to do it right, and we want to make sure everyone is kind of, you know, maybe not everyone's fully agreeable, but at least everyone understands why we're doing it and is coming to the table on it.
And you don't want to put all the time in and then have it-
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
Paul?
Yeah, um, Pat, nice to meet you. I'm, I'm new to the planning board here and just trying to get my senses here. So I, I kind of go on the line of with Katie, um, you know, listen, this town has a lot of boards. Um, and again, this is me as a, as a town owner, you know, that sometimes I think the boards don't know what the other board's doing. You know, everybody's making their own siloed decisions, and if it's not, if it doesn't pertain to us, you throw it to the next board or what have you. I mean, you know, is there an idea of having kind of a committee? Now, again, I don't know if that's this housing partnership that people are talking about or another, you know, MBTA zoning committee or something that where, you know, somebody has a seat at it and we can give advice and so forth, you know, give our views, but, but not spearheaded, like we, you know?
Absolutely. No, that's, I mean, I think the chairman even mentioned it too. Other towns are doing different things. Some towns, the planning board's spearheading it, some other towns, the select board, or it's a steering committee, a composition of at-large members, planning board members, select board members, maybe there is a housing partnership in other towns. I think ultimately, however it's directed, having different viewpoints is also really important to that, to that initiative as well. So I think, you know, I understand the housing partnership, but I think even having, you know, a contrarian point of view is also important to writing zoning like that, because it helps usually come out with a better product.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. I mean, I think anybody that would be affected by this, again, maybe FinCom, maybe, you know, again, zoning, you know, having some, having at least somebody from every department there, present, and giving, you know, advice to-
Certainly.
Again, and, and stating what the common goal, what are we looking to do? What is the common goal here, you know? And, and trying to reach that, you know, for the best interest of Wappo.
Absolutely.
Okay. Go ahead, Phil.
Could I just ask, I, I see Marcus here. I just was, Mark, would, do you think the select board would be willing to maybe form a joint committee with the planning board and others to, to work on this as a working committee?
We didn't say joint working, Phil. I think it's been, we're not gonna be the leader. I think what's been talked about by, especially Kate and Paul, is you appoint a committee, and if you have someone from the, on the planning board on it-
Yeah, seat at the table.
Yeah, seat at the table.
Yep.
So it, so I'll just say, you know, I, I came and spoke briefly a few weeks ago, so I, I do think it would be best if the planning board was the driver of this process, since it's gonna result, and I think it's zoning overlay. And I'm, I'm not speaking for Pat, that's my point of view. If the planning board is not at a position where they're ready to do that or able to do that, I think a steering committee could work. Um, I wouldn't do it, I would, the housing partnership is sort of inactive, and I wouldn't reactivate them just for this issue, because their focus is very narrow. It's on the housing. And I think we need to take a look at, there is a housing component, but there's a zoning component. So a steering committee, I would want to make sure, and I, and I would ask that somebody, um, and again, that, you know, I haven't talked to Jim about this, but my opinion would be, it would be great if somebody from the planning board could be on it. We would get other people to be on it, somebody from the select board, and put a group together that understands zoning and the housing piece and works through it. And then, you know, we would want to make sure it got back to you in time so there was a good, healthy discussion and gets voted before, you know, it's ready to go to town meeting. There is sort of a time limit in place. I think we have two more town meetings at which to pass it, just based on the state's timing. So I don't know whether we could do this quick enough to have it on the spring town meeting and have it vetted, but, you know, my goal would be we ought to try that, just so we had another town meeting behind that if we had to. So again, I'm just talking off the top of my head, but I, I think a steering committee could work if we got the right people involved, and, and I think it would be very important that somebody from planning board be involved with that, especially since it probably is gonna end up with a, a zoning overlay of some sort. So, does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes a hundred percent sense, because you think about it, aside from our time is, you know, you know, all the money we get for all the overtime and all the money we get from consultants, which is none. But what makes more sense, Mark, is when you work in a vacuum, it doesn't work. So if you had selectmen, planning board, water and sewer, you're gonna need them. You're gonna need everybody that's affected by this, just this isn't dropping an overlay. How does it affect the water and sewer service? How, that's what you need. So if you have them all at a table, that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah.
I think it'll go quicker.
Could I suggest too, just from, because we didn't do it on master plan, I think someone from zoning should be included.
Mm-hmm. Okay, but those are all great suggestions, so, thanks.
Everybody that touches, I would say, Mark.
Right, I, you know, I think there's an aspect of, I think we need some real estate people involved, because, you know, we, we need to look at, if we're gonna do this in the downtown area, you know, we oughta take a real look at that.
Well, naturally, if you're public, and that would be one of the qualifications, you want a real estate or a bill, or developer something on there. And also, what do you call them, pro temp, even Rick Mattson. Because you got a lot of, unless you're gonna have the sewer and water on it, or not necessarily Jim, but somebody who can rep, well, you guys represent them too. But as long as you, everybody who's touched is on that group, will make, I think it'll go quicker.
And, and I agree with what I, I think Katie said earlier. If we, if we do this, we want to do it right the first time. We don't want to screw this up, so. I've heard what you've had to say, so I, I think we can make a steering committee work, so, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I make a motion that we inform, that we work with the select board to make a steering committee.
Uh, we, not after us, the other guys are gonna do the steering, right? Uh, Chief, you change the motion, we support their steering committee.
But I think as Mark said, he, he thinks that we should be a part of that, that's a-
Well, one member from each, that's what we're talking about.
But I think, Phil, I think we have, we have to determine who's going to create the steering committee.
Yeah, and they'd have to, because we-
Pat, is that, is that gonna come from you, Pat? Or, or Mark? I mean, who's gonna, who's gonna, who's gonna, I mean, I think we're saying somebody will represent the planning board.
Why don't I say it this way? We have a select board meeting next Tuesday, and I'm sure this will be on the agenda. We'll talk about it and come back to you right after that with what, what kind of support we would need from you, so.
Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just want to say one last thing? One reason why the planning board often is considered the board to, to work on zoning bylaws and, and on the overall planning is because we, we have a lot of experience with zoning bylaws. We're looked at the, one, one of the, the resources that, obviously, we have other resources in town as well, but that's, you know, that is-
Well, we, in theory, Phil, we really don't work with them much, because we're only dealing with roads, forty-six feet. You gotta comply to this. We don't do variances, we don't do, uh, all the other stuff to go along with it. We don't care if the house is ten feet from the line, a hundred, because that's not our purview. Our purview is the road and all that, which is always better.
But I'm more thinking of a look and view of the town and how we went zoning and-
Oh, but zone, a member of the zoning board, that makes sense too, because they're the ones who deal, they're the ones with the book on their desk all the time. We very rarely look at our book, so. Okay, thanks, Mark. All right, done? All right, first zoning article. I got home?
Yep.
All right, all right. So under master general laws, chapter forty-eight, section five, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, the twenty-first, at seven P.M. at Town Hall. Purposes to provide interested parties the opportunity to comment on proposed amendment on the Wappo zoning bylaws, which have been submitted to the two thousand and twenty-three fall town meeting. And what it says, this is the amended version, what it says, amend scheduled use regulations, table five B, one point three, point W, section five dash B, point two, and section fourteen definitions by removing all existing language and with references to section regarding accessory in-laws suites and replacing them with the revised language for the allowance of accessory dwelling use units or anything thereof. And this is not what we've ever done before. You wipe out a whole thing. So rather than cross it out, the whole thing's gone, and this is the new one. And so with that being said, the applicant or the person gets to speak to it.
So, uh, as the board may remember, back in the spring, uh, this came forward as a select board sponsored article. Ultimately, when it went to the finance commission, there was, and I believe the planning board too, there was a recommendation to go back to committee. And over the summer, we took that initiative of looking at the proposal that was there before, coming up with provisions that, um, uh, we amended a meeting, well, I say we, but the select board ended a meeting in, I believe it was August, I don't know, July seventeenth, and then August first, and ultimately voted on the proposal that is before you today. So I can go through it verbatim, or if you have a question on a specific element.
Okay, before we get into it, I know the selectmen sponsored, what was the selectmen's vote on, on it, though?
Five, zero. Five in favor, zero opposed.
All right, well, so just for the record, when did they vote that?
It was August first.
Sorry, five, zero in what, favor?
Five in favor, zero opposed.
August first, five, who, who, just want to get that down, because we don't have that necessar- I don't know if we ever got that vote, but I know it's not up online either. Okay. Now, with that being said, I'll start with, I'll go with Paul on this. You have questions, comments, or what's being proposed?
Nothing that stood out that concerned me, Jack, um, at this time.
Okay. Kate?
So we had talked about this the last time this came up, and I didn't see that it had changed, and I just want to make sure I'm not incorrect.
Yep.
If this were to go through the way it is, there will be no public hearing?
Correct. It'd be handled as a by right use.
Um, so because of that and because of all the things we discussed last time, I don't want to, you know, beat it to death because we did go through it. That's my only issue with it, is that I don't feel we should take that out of the mix. So I, I'm opposed to that.
Okay.
Yep.
Phil?
So I, so I support this. I think it's very important for us to make it easier for ADUs to be built. Massachusetts has a housing crisis. Right now, we're only building half the number of houses per year that we need. As a result of that, is, we, we see the high price of housing in Wappo and eastern Massachusetts, which actually prevents a lot of our own family members from buying a house in, in our own town, workers and so forth. Um, ADUs are good, that, they've been proven. Now, I, I did a lot of research on it. They're not really that new. Before World War Two, it was very common for people to, to actually build another, another unit in their house. Uh, the experience of California, Oregon, and other states and cities have been very positive. When, when you have the requirement of a special permit, it, it reduces, it discourages people from, from applying for one, so I think having it be by right is very important. Also, allowing elders to stay in their home, I think that's one bit part of this. We, you know, we have the three, three, um, orders of kinship, but also allowing people to, to, to remain in their house. So elders is, is also another, another very important thing, so. So I think it's something very needed. I think it'll go a long ways for, um, helping produce housing in, in Wappo. It's actually important, and thank you, Patrick.
And John?
Select board.
Patrick, maybe I've missed it, but it appears as if the third degree of kinship has been taken out of this bylaw?
Nope, still there. Um, it was just, uh, to, to Mr. Chikarowski's point, it was added. So in the purpose, we, not just to read it verbatim for you, provide property owners with an opportunity to age in place by creating independent living space for individuals over the age of fifty-five, and B, provide a living space for relatives related within a third degree of kinship of the owner of the primary dwelling unit.
Okay, where is that second phrase you just mentioned? Because I didn't see it in my paperwork.
Should be on, uh, in the purpose section, John.
Ah, okay, there it is. But it's not, this listed as purpose, but it's not part of the regulations.
No, that, that, that is. That's the purpose of the creation of an ADU. It for, is for those two purposes.
Originally, there were two aspects I didn't like. That was one, but if that wording is sufficient to keep that aspect, is, it solves one of my issues. The second is, I agree with Katie, definitely want the special permits to stay there in place. Before turning a one family into essentially a two family, the brothers should have a say, make their voices heard before the town board, before it's accepted. So I'm against it with, it doesn't have the special permit requirement on it. And I'm glad that the third degree kinship has remained in it. Thank you.
All set? All right, um, back to what Kate said, and even John, that's what I thought all along, is you definitely need a special permit, because this is a, you're allowing a special use in a single family. So a special use should come with a special permit. Uh, and one thing's about a special permit is you can work with whoever you're working, whoever in front of you, where you have just an application, this, one and one is two on this. There's no wiggle room. Special permit, you can do a whole lot of stuff. You agree?
Yeah, you can approve or deny a special permit.
But you can also say, no, well, I don't think you need that extra car, or I think you could, you have that, you're gonna need another space. You, when you're working there, you're working with the person to make it the best plan.
You certainly could within the special-
Oh, no, you, you do.
You certainly couldn't, and as, you also could with staff as well, so this would be going through the-
Yeah, well, okay, but here's the other thing. I have a problem with things starting to come in these walls. If I'm in a butter, I don't know anything that's going on. If I bought a single family, I'm sitting there. Next thing you know, I see something going up next to me. What's that about?
True.
And you would have no idea. And the other thing, if you're in a buttered, it's kind of like we had the other night with the RVs. Where are you gonna put the addition? To the side of the yard, to the person you don't like?
Well, it is regulated to where-
I, I understand it's regulated, Patrick, but there's, if you, you wouldn't want somebody shoving something at you if you didn't have some say to it. But remember, once again, these are single-family residential zones.
Correct.
You're allowing something special. It should stay special. And I don't think to date, any of the, there's been any big issues with these permits in front of the zoning board, but, uh, that's my say on that. Now, there's a few things that I go through, because I'm what I do for a living. And a few of them are, um, just so everybody understands that this is now allowed everywhere. It doesn't matter, it used to be allowed as a matter of right in general residence, which makes sense, because general residence is multi-family, right? I agree with that. But I'm looking first off on your regulations, there's no parking code.
It would fall the same way it would for any residential use.
Fall the same way as what?
It would be regulated the same way any residential-
How is it gonna be reg, how?
Two spaces per unit.
But it doesn't say that here. You created something new. You need, you're going now with the building department.
So the way we have it regulated within the regulations is that all parking is located onsite, not-
No, I, I don't, if I am a person gonna apply for this, it doesn't tell me how many cars I have to have, parking spaces. It's blank.
The existing one doesn't have anything either.
I know the existing, but with a special permit, John, you can work that out.
Yeah.
This...
I don't find it to be a concern. So it's a single-family home, you have to have the cars within the site, that's how it's regulated.
Wait, but it doesn't say that here.
It says within the regulations that the parking needs to be onsite, not...
Okay, but how many cars, it doesn't tell you.
It's up to the, you know, it's your home.
It's up to who?
Property owner. It's your home.
If I want to put six, am I gonna allow to be put six additional spaces?
We have additional part, we have additional regulation that regulates how many cars you can have at a residential home.
You need that...
We went over that...
It needed in here. Why isn't it, it should be there.
I just want to say that, and I did a lot of research.
Phil, I have the floor. No, no, you interrupt me all the time, and I let you speak, so you wait to the end. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, let's go. Over fifty-five. Explain.
So back in the spring, when we went through FinCom, there seemed to be kind of a back-and-forth and a division on how people thought you would regulate occupancy. I know not everyone agrees, but some people feel that it should be fully open, some people feel it should be strict as, and just be in-law. This is our attempt to kind of try to find a middle ground, to try to listen to the, you know, to basically the feedback we got. Not everyone agrees fully on how occupancy is regulated on an ADU. It's a, it's a, it's definitely a factor most towns are going through that are regulating it. So this is why we went, looked at a few other towns that had kind of like middle ground regulation, or if you want to call it, trying to find a halfway measure. And we feel that having another option for seniors to age in place is something that kind of helps to meet that middle standard, but also look at a need, which is senior housing.
Now, as I go along, I want you to understand, I'm only picking at them how it's gonna work.
Yep.
I understand why I want fifty-five. Where does the fifty-five-year-old go? The addition or the existing house?
It would go into the ADU.
They would?
Yes.
If I live there, I'm over fifty-five, and I have one of my kids come back, and, but I still got kids at home, I have to move to that and they get the rest of my house?
You don't have to.
Well, you just said the fifty-five-year-old has to be in the new...
The fifty-five-year-old doesn't have to be family. And how the inside of the is regulated, it's...
No, no, you just, I asked you where does the fifty-five-year-old have to go, and you said into the new addition.
But Patrick, if it's a child, they would be eligible, I'm just trying to clarify.
No, you're just interrupting.
That's right. I mean, that's, that's, if you want to have your family move in and you take the ADU, or they could take the ADU.
Once again, I am going down, you gotta understand, when you go down the hall, you gotta have clear and concise. When you do building permits, it has to be a two-by-four, not a two-by and almost a four. That, I'm just picking at these. These, these are, because these are technical things that you don't want to have problems down the road. The other thing is, if you're, say you're fifty-four, and something happens, you can't do this, can you?
So I guess you couldn't unless you were third, third degree of kinship, so...
No, no, you said someone has to be fifty-five.
Correct.
So say I'm a fifty-year-old, and I want to add one of these, because, because I'm getting, there's something wrong, and I want my kids to come in and move into the main house. I can't do this, because there's no one in the house over fifty...
You can, because it's still the third degree of kinship. Fifty-five does not need to be family. Fifty-five can be...
Patrick, please stay with me.
I am.
All right, I'm not talking kinship. I'm going with the age.
Yes.
If I walk in and give an application, and I'm fifty, and I want to put this addition to allow my, for me to move over, and my kids to come in, daughter and whatever, can't do it, because we don't meet the fifty-five threshold.
Again, it's a separate purpose. It does not counteract.
But you say you gotta be fifty-five.
Can I interrupt for a second, Jack, just to clarify something? Are you saying it can be either A or B? It doesn't have to be A and B?
Correct.
Doesn't say that, though.
Yeah, well, that kind of throws out the whole idea between forcing it to have a third degree of kinship. You're saying it doesn't have to have third degree of kinship anymore, as long as he's over fifty-five.
For that A use, correct.
Yeah, that's totally against the purpose of what the original article was for.
Well, like I explained earlier, we brought this to FinCom, not everyone was agreeing on the third degree of kinship. This is a middle ground of trying to look at what was said.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is, you have to meet either one?
Correct.
That isn't what it says, but okay, you gotta take it to another one. So if you're going that way, then if I'm fifty-five, I don't have to have third degree of kinship. I can have anybody move in.
In terms of your ADU?
Yeah.
The ADU is for the fifty-five-year-old. It's not the fifty-five-year-old creating an ADU and then...
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is, you're saying it's either or. Now, I understand what you're saying. So if I'm fifty-five, I qualify, all right? But I can have a non-kinship live in the other part of the house.
If you're fifty-five and you want to build an ADU, a fifty-five-year-old can live in the ADU.
I understa, all right. So when I'm all done, does the person in the other part of the house have to be related to me?
In terms of living in the ADU?
No, just in living in the, on the property.
Correct. They, if, the ADU is only for a fifty-five-year-old or kinship. It is not, you can't be a fifty-five-year-old, build the ADU, and then rent out the home, too.
I didn't say rent out, okay? What I thought, the whole purpose of it is, this is all, you gotta be related, and this is what we're allowing. But if you're saying it's either or, you build it, I go, I'm over fifty-five, I go sit in this house, I can have anybody move in. There can be anybody. It doesn't have to be any kinship, correct?
I'll let the chair, I'll let the commissioner speak first.
Thank you, Mr. Jim Crowley, building commissioner. So the purpose of this through the boards, it's staying basically the same as an in-law. The only difference is the fifty-five year-old. So say if you own the house, you can build the addition like an in-law.
Yep.
You have the choice to move into it and let your family have the main house.
Okay.
That's allowed. The other option is you can stay in the house. If someone fifty-five or older wants to move into the ADU that's not of kinship, they can move into the ADU.
Okay, so what we, so basically, we're creating a bunch of two-family houses throughout the town?
Yes.
Hundred percent, a hundred percent. This was supposed to be, your mother's sick, your father, and they're supposed to, now I can just have someone else move in?
Over fifty-five.
No, I fifty-five, I can put anybody else in there.
No.
What do you mean, no? If I'm over fifty-five, why can't I?
No, the person inhabiting the ADU has...
No, okay, forget which inhabit, I inhabit the right fifty-five. We have now opened up that Joe Blow coming down the street can now live there. That's a two-family. We're not, we're, we're not helping family units. We're just building more multi-units.
So not necessarily, no.
But you, there's nothing to prevent anybody from moving in?
There is. So you have to be, if someone's moving to the ADU, you have to be either third kind of kinship, or if you're over fifty-five.
Okay, all right, then I'm gonna give it like this. I build onto my house, I move into the fifty-five. Someone moves in from another town, can live in my house?
No.
What, you just...
It says in this that the owner has to be occupied. So the ADU side of it can be, you, as the owner, you can move in the ADU if you choose to, and rent your, and let your family move into the main unit, third kind of kinship. If you live in the main house, and someone over fifty-five wants to move into the ADU side, they can move into the ADU side. It's just because once you go over fifty-five...
All right, okay, so we're getting confused with the houses, but it doesn't matter. So what we're down to brass tacks is that you could have two unrelated families on a single-family lot in the house with this.
In the ADU, you can have someone that's not over fifty-five.
So this is not necessarily, the in-law is out. We don't, we're not, the whole purpose of this is so that you can help your family, you stay together as a unit, all right? Now, all of a sudden, here you go. Go in.
Not necessarily. So the whole principle of this was, as Patrick was saying, they tried to change the in-law last year. It went back before the board, I believe, three times, written three different ways, and the split was fifty-fifty. So the board came back with Patrick on how do we get everybody's, from both sides, to come to a simple agreement? Some people wanted a rental, I didn't agree with it. Some people wanted third type of kinship, some people wanted the kinship gone completely. So what Patrick's doing is he's taking what the state are allowing ADUs, as of right, up to nine hundred square feet. So previously, you could be thirty-three percent the size of the house, or a thousand square feet. One of the ways was, the original decision under the zoning was, last year was, make it up to twelve hundred and fifty square feet. Some people wanted it back down to eight fifty, eight hundred. So we're, Patrick's trying to find a middle ground, and from whatever each side was coming to, it's basically still an in-law. The only alteration to a degree is, with the ADU, it's restricting the size. Nine hundred is the max. You can't go over that. And the only other addition to it is, is to help people aging in place, that if you live in Wapo and you can't afford a house, or you can't afford rent, you can move into someone's ADU if you're over fifty-five.
Okay, and that's where I have a huge problem. You've now created multifamily buildings in single-family residents. I, I thought this was, you had to comply to both, which was fine. You had to be over fifty-five, which made sense, and you had to be third degree of kinship. Now it's either or. So now we've created all these multis. It's, it's, it's created, it's created multis. But since you've hit upon that, Jim, there's something further down. Now I'm gonna hit, I'll hit on it now. It says no short-term rentals. So you haven't disallowed long-term rentals. Of course, there's no definition of what short-term rentals are.
Well, zoning wouldn't dictate whether it's ownership or rental.
No, no, no.
You could dictate not to have short-term rentals, which is like an Airbnb, we can...
You said, yeah, but, but there's no definitions in the, anywhere that defines a short-term rental. But now, but what you're saying is, if you're trying to prevent Airbnb, I understand that. But my point is, now you're gonna allow one of the units to be rented. And, and you know what's, what's really getting me is, you know, and I've done it before, I got some multis, to go to be a two-family in a general residence, I had to go for a special permit. Now we're taking single-family, and you can rent them.
No.
No? Well, you said short-term rentals or...
We're not dictating that within the bylaw. Zoning does not dictate whether it's ownership or rental. What happens in that unit, that's not what the bylaw looks to dictate.
But you said in your bylaw, no short-term rentals. You did not disallow, what?
Short-term rentals are a clear difference. You're talking about an Airbnb, a non-frequent...
Patrick, stop going around. So you're allowing rentals, though. You agree?
No, we're not, we're not even touching that. We're just explaining what the use is, what happens within the use. It's not our concern.
Okay, if you, you said in here, no short-term rentals.
Yes.
Why didn't you just say no rentals?
We're not gonna dictate what happens.
So, okay, you're not gonna dictate, so we keep going back to, it's a two-family.
It's an accessory unit. It's supposed to be a parent of a single-family home, and that's why it's regulated. I'm standing by that. It's fine.
Can I just ask a question for clarification?
Oh, my God, this is unbelievable.
No, I have a question.
It was also looking into what the feedback we got. This wasn't something we just threw out.
Feedback from whom, though?
The Finance Commission. When we went to the Finance Commission, we checked on it.
Okay, the Finance Commission, what is, and, you know, they're gonna look at this and hate me, they've hated me forever. What do they know about this? You've had one night in there for about a half hour. I've done this thirty-two years. I think I know a little bit more than most, but what I see here is an end around to make every residential use, single-family, into, you could have two families in there.
It's not two families.
What do you mean, not two families? You can have two beds. You don't limit the number of people in the ADU.
He does.
You do.
It is limited to...
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms and two people.
All right, so you rented that out, John. It's pretty easy to do. So basically, you're gonna create all these units. You don't think so?
Nope.
I do. That, that's, to me, that's...
Can I just interrupt for one second, just because I don't want to get away from what he said, and I want to understand what you said. You, can you just clarify for me? You said we're not going to, and I'm, I don't have the words you said, so forgive me if I rephrase it wrong. You said we're not going to regulate...
We're not gonna dictate what happens into the area, and so you could rent a room of your home, you know what I mean?
So you are saying they can rent that out?
We're not saying they can or can't. We're saying what the use is for, and the use is for either an A, is either a third degree of kinship can live in the ADU, or an individual over the age of fifty-five.
So this is where I'm very confused, and I'm not trying to argue, I'm just confused. So until you said that, I never, so are you saying they can, so you're not saying they can or can't, but shouldn't we be saying they can't rent it out? Isn't that the intent of this? This is supposed to be an accessory unit, we're not making multifamilies. We are...
As a recommendation, we can do a substantive motion and add that in there.
But no, I'm not, and I'm not arguing with you, Pat. I'm just trying to clarify. I never, until you said that, it was like, am I incorrect in saying that? That's not your intent, right? That they're renting this out?
The intent, the intent is to provide another use for the ADU.
Another use circumventing zoning. That's what this is, an end round around zoning. Single-family, now we're allowing it in there.
So just, I just want to clarify something for quick, Phil. You guys keep saying you, you, it's not Patrick.
No, no, and I'm not, I'm just...
I thought...
The select board voted to place this article on, on the warrant. It's on the warrant. What we're here tonight is for you folks to conduct a public hearing. I understand, Jack, you may have a lot of concerns about the way this is written. It's written, and it's not written in stone at this point, but it's not changing. The only people who can change it at this point is the Finance Committee. They could take your feedback, you know, on, uh, middle of October at their public hearing, vote to change the motion. It's, it's written the way it is, and it's not against Patrick here. I don't, I just don't want it to become personal.
No, I didn't say it was. I said it's all about picking the parties.
Jim's gonna be doing the enforcement on this one. The purpose of this, the select board was very clear to me, to Jim, and to Patrick. It was to, we want to streamline this process for people. I understand this, some concern about not having a public hearing, not going before the zoning board. It's written the way it is. People will have the opportunity to discuss it at a town meeting. If they vote it down, it can't come up for another two years. If they vote it up, so be it. It'll be in the town bylaws. And the back and forth, I understand the questions, and totally valid, but I just don't want to make it personal against him, and that's, that's the...
It's definitely not personal against you. You're just the person here to explain it, and that's why.
Okay, but we're still...
I just have a few things to say when you get through, Jack. I don't want to lose that, my place.
Go ahead, write on that, because I'm gonna jump to another one, Phil.
Okay. So, so ADUs are an important part of our providing housing, where we have an acute shortage. Experience in towns is that they don't really cause problems with the neighborhoods. They actually provide a very practical housing, because they're very inexpensive to build, as opposed to building a whole house, you're building within an existing house. You know, we don't regulate when people do large additions. They, they do whatever they want, virtually. So there's really not a lot of difference in that regard. Someone can do a large addition, you know, when you were speaking before about, you know, doing something that's right in the lane. Most people don't do those things. I think people are fairly, fairly considerate. But there's, there's, in nineteen fifty, the average square foot per person living in a house was about three hundred square feet. Today, it's nine hundred, because we have all these large houses. So it makes sense to allow the ability, particularly for our elders or family, family members, to, to be able to take advantage and live, and live in a AUDU. Now, one of the problems the ADU had, when we talked about the, you know, three degree of kinship, is that you get into situations where it may be, it may be a relative, an elder, who is maybe not directly related, but maybe someone who's, who's almost like a family member. And, you know, with this, it gives the flexibility that they could move into an assisted living. Otherwise, you have all these situations where you're, you're very, very restricting it. Now, the issues like parking, and, you know, those come up all the time, and I've done a lot of research.
Okay.
Those are often used as a way to really make it more difficult to, to have a, you know, to get past articles like this, but they're, they have not shown to be a problem. What does happen, though, is that we increase our housing stock. And I will say that, just, just, you know, there's thirty-seven other towns around us that don't have...
Okay, Phil, Phil, okay, I understand, we're not gonna go into the housing crisis. I get sick of here, because it's a crisis every day. It's not a crisis anymore. What we got here is now you're gonna take a single-family, if you live in a single-family residence, someone across the street can rent to somebody else by doing this. That's what you've said.
And that may not be so bad.
That's what's written in here. Patrick, when I say that's what's said, I mean in here.
Sure.
All right, so I didn't, when you bought your single-family residence, you went, you could have gone down east Wapo, you didn't. You're up where you are, in single-family land. So that's the whole point, is, single-family is single-family. It's, to me, I'll say, it's, it's, it's end around the destruction of single-family, which has been, been attacked for the last five or six years. But this really goes at it.
Thirty-seven.
To me, Phil, I don't want to hear the stats. All I'm saying is, if they had both of them together, but right now, on our in-laws, you can only be an in-law. I thought this was just an extension without a special permit. No, this is, this is throwing the in-laws out. This is like being able just to create more housing stock in single-family residence.
I'm only mentioning this because thirty-seven towns around us have, have, yeah, taken away the restriction that had to be relatives, and they've had, they haven't, they've had good, but they've had good experience. If you want to look at experience in other towns.
Good experience. We wouldn't have laws if everybody was good, correct?
Well, I'm just saying...
But I'm just saying, just don't say, you know, you say, well, this won't happen, the people are good around here. That's why we have laws. That's why we have bylaws, because there's other people gonna take advantage of it. So that's what we're here for. Now, I want to continue on, all right? Now, I wanna continue on, alright? Number five, Patrick.
Yep.
It explained to me, is, I'm looking at it. I'm picking on you, I'm just looking at it, explain.
The invalidity clause.
Um, it says, one, once an accessory unit dwelling has been added to a single-family residence or lot. I don't get the "or lot."
Section five, or?
Number five of the use regulations.
Okay, sorry.
I don't, I'm reading that, not, I don't know what that means.
So basically, you can have an in-law unit that's below nine hundred square feet, but you're limited up to nine hundred square feet. You can never exceed nine hundred square feet.
No, no, okay, no, but.
Yeah.
You read after single, it says.
Oh, or lot.
Or a lot. That's where, what does that mean?
For my, it's supposed to be primarily single-family residence. I'm not sure if our law is really needed.
So what is the "or lot"? I don't, what is that?
It may just be a misnomer. I don't think that was intentional to divert anywhere else.
Well, I was just, if you guys are writing, and I'm just trying to figure, is this somewhere, and I, I didn't know, that's why I'm asking. Okay, so, alright. Uh, now, number ten down there, it says, "Short-term rentals within the dwelling units are prohibited." But, so that means you can rent out the others, okay? Um, let's see. Uh, alright, the, 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 number six, "The owners of the residence in which the accessory unit is created must occupy the primary unit or its ADL as their primary residence." Okay. Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's, but it conflicts a little with the purpose back here, but we've gone down that road. Uh, ten, twelve, we talked about parking. Uh, alright, as far as, as far as the permit, seems pretty easy. You walk in there, and you give a floor plan, but we don't see anything here, is what are the requirements for survey, architectural?
That would all be within the typical building permit.
Yeah. So, when people apply for a building permit, whether it's been approved by a variance special permit or as of right, once you add on to a house, you fall under category of what the permit requires. You would not be allowed to belong to any house without a full site, uh, full plot plan showing the setbacks, everything, so that you're not in violation of the zoning.
Okay, so you're gonna go by that, okay?
Yeah.
Now, a question for you, Jim. Um, and it's not written here, and I can't, my guess is, you probably wouldn't be able to do this on a non-conforming lot, or you'd be limited to, or?
So it depends, so we've, non-conforming lot doesn't stop you from building it. You could have a non-conforming lot, but a conforming house, um, so.
Yeah, but if, we also have non-conforming houses, so, that, that's kinda not here, it's not spelled out.
No, so if, if, it would fall back into already zoning that already protects it. So if you came in and say your house was non-conforming due to side yard, and you wanted to build into the side yard, you'd actually have to go before the zoning board first, for an expansion of a non-conformity, and get approved by that, before you could even build in there.
So, you, so, okay, what you just said is, if, if you're a non-conformity right now, and you go by these guidelines, but you're non-conforming, you gotta go get that approved first, and then you can do.
Yes.
The ADU.
The, the underlying zoning of the town already protects, this is just adding to it, with every building, so even, if you go, if you brought in, even if this was a special permit approved by the board, we would've been at the board stating, they can't build into the side yard, can't build into the rear yard.
Okay, so this is not superseding, it's just?
Almost definitely not.
Okay, so, at some point, you're gonna have people that would have to do the special permit first, for non-conforming, and then they come down to you?
Yes. So if they come in with an ADU, and they're applying for it, and it triggers either a special permit, 'cause already in a side yard or a rear yard, or if they want to go into that side yard or rear yard, they're gonna trigger variance, they'll be sent to the board before anything would be approved.
Okay, um, the other question while you're up, you wrote something in here is, and I'm not familiar with it, I'm familiar with recording deeds and all this stuff. You can record letters like this at the registry?
Yes, you can record virtually anything, registry deeds.
I know, you could, you could record a ham sandwich down there, but, still, it's, but the other thing, it did say something, and my only comment is, it's, is, whether it goes through or not, is it says, something has to be approved by you in a form. My, my suggestion, if this does go through, create one, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, we're actually, I already talked to the Select Board about this, that if, again, we're doing it for the, we're actually doing it for the in-laws as well right now, um, whether this goes through or not, we're actually doing new forms, because right now, everything goes under building permit. We're creating a new permit for in-laws specifically, so we can control it better, and this'll add to it.
Okay. Um, the other one is, and I know you've said it many times, is you don't, you, your, your group down there is a complaint-based?
Mm-hmm.
So if someone doesn't report biennial, this is C of the administration?
Mm-hmm.
You're not gonna go looking for them, or you may not, how is that being handled?
No, so this will be handled now, 'cause again, with us being a hundred percent online with everything, and we can create a special permit for ADUs, and with the requirements that we can do, we already do annual inspections that are automatically sent out for, say, uh, one-ten inspections for schools, businesses, we do the restaurants every year. We can add this to our system, that the owner will be sent out a reminder, that every two years, they have to contact the building department. If they don't contact us, our system notifies us it's due, and if they don't come to us, we go to them.
Okay, so it's, it's done within your computer. The one thing that's interesting is, the owner's supposed to tell you he's selling, he's leaving. Good luck.
Yeah, so that's part of why we, the, this, the board brought in the registry deeds as well, because we want them to register the deed, so we do this a lot with, in conjunction with the health department on, say, septic systems. If you have a four-bedroom, so, we make them change the deed, because majority of houses right now just say, "single-family." We're making people change the deed and update it, so if you go to buy the house, if you went to buy it from me, it will state, "single-family home with an ADU." So the new owner will be notified through the, the registry deeds. So when they go to buy this, they'll know it.
So the old owner leaving isn't gonna notify you he's leaving? It's gonna be, come back the other way?
Yes, but say if the owner leaves, and says nothing to us, which obviously happens a lot, our system's gonna notify us that they're due after two years, that's why the board wanted this in there, to control it more, 'cause, um, we had one member of the FinCom that stated that they know six houses in town that are in-laws, approved in-laws, and they're all being rented. So this gives us a lot more authority, a lot more control over keeping a line, so even if someone does sell their house, and doesn't inform us, when, when the two years come up, we'll be paying them a visit, going, "Is Mr. Conroy here?" And he goes, "No, I sold to Mr. O'Leary." Then Mr. O'Leary's inherited, and if he's renting it, he, as the owner of record, under mass law, he gets all our violations and all the nice fines that go with it.
Alright, then. Now, I won't go through some of the other stuff, because you've kinda explained it, but, there's a few things in the old bylaws that's not in here, that I thought probably should be. And one of them is, is, the old one is, you gotta prove that you have an bona fide certificate of occupancy. That's not in these. The existing one is, if I come to you and I wanna add on, and you go back to your plans, and the original one says it's a, you know, thirty-by-forty cape, but now he's got a thing out here, you got no record of it.
Mm-hmm.
The one we have now, they're not allowed to do it.
So if someone comes in with a house that the estate has an addition on it, and we have no record of it, so it means it was built on illegally?
Yep.
So you'd fall back under mass general law, forty-eight, section six or ten. So obviously, it's not gonna go under six, because they don't have a permit, falls under ten, which means they're in violation of mass general law, which means they can keep the structure, they cannot keep the use. So the only way they can do that is come back in and apply for permits, um, and with the electrical code, plumbing code, they'd actually have to gut it back down to the studs for all inspections, and it would be more headache for them, and they would not be allowed, if you applied for this, and we found something in your house that's not, that was not permitted, you would deny this on that basis, and you'd have to fix the problem that is there now, before you'd be allowed given an ADU.
No, I do like that they wouldn't allow you to do it, because you're punished for that.
Yeah.
You're still gonna get them, but I still like, that, that wasn't a bad, uh, originally, the lot size right now was fifteen thousand, now there's nothing in there, so you could be in a rural, with a grandfathered lot of five thousand, still, as long as you meet all the criteria, correct?
Because of the national regulations.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Alright, so that's, that's gone. So now, basically, basically any piece of, uh, property right now is up for grabs then, okay? Um, yeah, you've, the old law was a minimum of two-fifty, now there's no limit. Old was a third, now you're up to, what?
Nine hundred is the max. Uh, the minimum of two-fifty was put in there, and most towns put it in, but that's actually the minimum legality-wise from building department, is the minimum you can build something. So under the building code, you can't go any smaller than that.
That's why that was there, okay.
That's why sometimes just put that in as a reference, but, building code-wise, there's a minimum for bedrooms, kitchens, bathrooms, and it all adds up to roughly two-fifty.
Okay, they had something about landings and stuff. I didn't see it move over. What about the landings in the old one? They talked about landings?
Yeah, so the original on the old one, I believe, was if you had, you were allowed two exterior's landings. That was just basically another way of saying entrances. This still says you're allowed two exits, or exterior doors.
Okay, so you said that's covered, okay. Uh, this is one I do have an issue with, is, the, the existing one says it must look like a single-family. The new one says it has to have the same style. That's a whole different thing. Start, you could make it look like a two-townhouses, and that would be, that would comply to this. The whole purpose of this was to blend, what?
I think that's just.
I feel like it's kinda the same thing, I mean, it still has to look like a single-family home.
It doesn't say that. It says, all it says is, it has to be the same style. It doesn't say it has to look like a single-family.
Same materials, same style, construction.
Yeah, I, I, no, I can do that every day of the week. You could look at some right on North Street, all the little Joe Georges ones. Those are the, you could make it look, same materials and everything else, but you'd end up making it look like two separate houses. The way it is now is, you want it to blend, so when you drive by, you don't know what's there, other than it's a big house.
It's still intentionally.
It, it, the intent, but it doesn't, it doesn't say the intent. This is where we're going down the road, where, I, I'm using clapboards, I'm using uh, Stockholm, but I can offset it to make it look like with an, like a two fam, like a townhouse, that's all. That's, that's one of my, that's an issue there, but, okay. Um, the other one is, you know, I know why the, it's in there, one water meter. Was there a reason not to have one water meter, or what's the issue with that?
No, so the, even with the original rewrite of the, the in-law, the one meter stops you from becoming a two-family, because if you've only one meter, you can only have, basically, the main, the ADU's tied into the main house, so if you were allowed, go for, there was a special permit originally, under the existing one right now, is you can actually ask the zoning board to give you a second meter. We said that opens it up to being a two-family. We don't want it to be two, so by restricting it to one meter.
It doesn't say, the old one has one meter, your new one doesn't even talk about it.
While it's not stated in there, it's typically, I was gonna say, how can the engineering, this isn't something they would ever create two meters for a hallway, so it doesn't even really need to be stated? You wouldn't be, you wouldn't have to be.
To me, I like, the way I work is, it's stated, it's in black and white, not, eh, we're not gonna give it to you. That's what I'm saying, is, when you, this is different than a special permit, so, all this stuff needs to be stated, because if it, I'm gonna put a meter, and you guys say, "No, we never do that," I'm gonna start complaining. And you don't have a basis in which to back up. If it, now's the opportunity, you put it in, boom. Black and white, there's no fights, there's no beating each other up. So, um, so, those are like, going through, somebody explained, uh, the lot one was, trying to figure that one out for a while, Patrick, I don't know what lot, and is there some way we, you know, we said, it says, I probably should've said, I hate the word typo, a residential lot. Single-family, yeah, it shouldn't even be in there, but that doesn't matter. Alright, so, that was my take on it, I still, back to the original, but I said I'd go back to Phil, so go ahead, Phil.
I was just gonna say that, you know, I, I support it, and, you know, all of the research I have done shows that accessory dwelling units can be very successful in both providing more housing for elders and for family members. It can be a way to keep an elder in their house. It solves the problem where if someone does have today a, a house for a relative, what, what happens if the relative's no longer there? What do you do with it? So it does give an option to, to do something with it. And last, a, a lot of the, the problems that, that, you know, have been raised, experienced in other towns, show that these have not been a real problem.
We don't have any of that, Phil. You're just, you're stating that. We don't have any facts in front of us on that.
Well, I can give you facts.
No, no, we don't have any, so, and, and I don't wanna go to some that's been written like that, but.
And, like I said, there, there are thirty-seven towns in Massachusetts that have changed their, their zoning to allow, um, any person to, to live in an accessory dwelling.
In a single-family residence?
In a single-family residence.
In a single-family lot?
Yeah, yeah.
What are the towns?
Um, the ones nearest are Westwood, Dedham, Cockard, Southborough, Medfield.
Okay, do those require special permits?
Um.
I think they do.
That I don't know.
Okay, well, that's, that's part of this whole deal, is, you know, they may allow it, but they also can have special permits, but, okay. Alright, I think we'd beat this, gone, go ahead.
I have one other question. If the new wording would allow someone not within third degree of kinship, but over fifty-five to be allowed to live there, um, and there's nothing that says they can't be a long-term rental, and I'm assuming that someone who's not related to me, I'm gonna be charging them something to live there. That really seems to me to fit into the category of K, which is lodging house, in the use table. And that requires a special permit in each residential zone.
I wouldn't define it as a lodging house.
The letting of rooms or the furnishing of table board in a dwelling to not more than four lodges, whether regular or in transit.
I mean, if it was a real lodging house, I mean, the Building Commission should tell you, there's a whole other set of regulations that have to follow.
So the lodging house, um, in residential zones, you're up, you know, for a residential zone, you can go for a special permit and get a lodging house, if you, which means the owner does not live there, but you manage it through a lodging house under state law, If you, which means the owner does not live there, but you manage it through a lodging house under state law, under section one twenty-one. If you live in your house, you can rent it out to three other people while you live there. That's allowed as of right, no special permit. If someone goes through a lodging house in residential, he can only go up to four. Once he goes to five people, it triggers lodging house, which we only allow in LM districts and above, not allowed in residential. So if you do four people, if you go that way for a special one for a lodging house, the reason it's a lodging house is you're not the resident owner. You have the registered lodging house, you have to do an annual inspection, you're basically putting a lodging house in residential, but they max it out at state law to four people. But if I live in the house myself, I can have renters live there with me, up to three other people with me in the house.
And that's within zoning bylaws or is that just mass state laws?
That's our zoning bylaws and mass law. So if you're a single individual living in a four-bedroom house, you can by right, by law, rent out three of those rooms to any individual. Um, if you own a single-family home and say you, you live in your primary one, you can rent out that house to a family or up to four individual people. That's by right, mass law, our zoning. The lodging houses, if you're making it a business, that triggers a special permit because now you're basically, in an essence, you're making a lodging house as a commercial entity. And mass law, up to four people allow you to rent, to do as a lodging house in residential. So if you look at the two tables, you've got the table on chapter five, but also if you go to definitions in chapter fourteen, it states something slightly different. And it states that five or more is a lodging house. But that's in LM district. That's where the people get the, it's kind of like a lot of people will say, do you live in an apartment or do you live in a condo?
So you're saying somewhere in the definitions, it mentions renting.
So if you look up definitions for lodging house?
I saw that, yeah.
It goes to five or more. Because in our definitions, it's stating what a lodging house in the business side of things are. Um, if you look at our table, it splits it up to lodging house is, as you can see, is in LM, is allowed as of right. But in residential, needs a special permit because under mass law, you are allowed to do it. No one really does it because the requirements, the legality of it, the renting, you're making a business out of a family home, they don't, majority of people do not do it. Well, the same as having, say, a two-family. You can turn a two-family into condos and have two owners, or you can have one owner of a two-family. They live on the top floor and they rent out the bottom floor. They're allowed up to four individuals or a family.
Well, that's listed as a two-family, not as a single-family though.
You could actually make a single-family a condo. Seems extremely weird, but you can actually, can sell a single-family as a condo if you wanted. Just for legal, like a condo apartment, single-family is just a tax term basically to get a few loopholes, to keep some money in your pocket.
What, you still looking, John?
Go ahead.
I have a question. Um, I just noticed this now, based upon the number three use regulations, it says only one dwelling unit may be created within a single-family house lot. So GR is no longer allowable then.
Single-family house or lots, you're talking about use regulation A one?
Yep.
Only one accessory dwelling unit may be created within a single-family house or lot. So I guess.
Or lot.
That might be similar to before, it made it single-family house, which would probably be what it is, not a lot.
So I use, but the way it read, the way I'm reading it, it sounds like you can't do one in GR.
But I don't, it's still.
If you had a three-family down there and you wanted to do one of these, it doesn't say you can. I can't, that's what I'm reading, or I'm not reading that.
Oh, like in terms of having an ADU on a three-family?
Yeah.
No, you wouldn't be able to do that.
Why, why not?
Cause then it'd be a four-family, it'd be a multi, I mean, it.
That would be a four-family. But if we do it on one house, it's not a two-family, okay.
So this is the same thing as, even if we had an in-law right now?
Yeah.
You cannot put an in-law on a three-family.
Why?
Because an in-law is specifically designed for a single-family home. Once you have a three-family, you can't just put an in-law onto a single unit of a three-family.
You could make it work, you agree?
No, you wouldn't be allowed to do it. Our, our zoning law doesn't allow it. An in-law is attached to a single-family home. So if you had a triple-decker or a multi-unit, you cannot, that's why the table under, or in our previous one that we have right now, says it's, it's also not allowed in GR.
I thought it said it was allowed presently.
It, this one is.
Yeah, okay, but you have allowed in G, okay, but the other one did say.
The board wanted it allowed in GR now is because we have GR in our town, probably, I believe, was an eighty-five to ninety percent of GRs can't have anything else but a single-family home on it. So it wasn't allowed in the GR district even though ninety percent of the homes there are single-family. So they were being exempt because they, they can't put a two-family there, they can only do a single-family. So the lot size was killing them. So this is allowing it, the single families in the GR district to put on an ADU, an in-law basically. Cause right now, if I come for an in-law unit in GR district, I'm not allowed to do it, even though I have a single-family home.
So what this says, and I didn't read it necessarily that way, but the way I explain it is if I have a three-family, I can't do it. I mean, a two-family, I can't do it, but if I got a single, I can do it. Because if, if it was a three-family, you'd be really making a four, and if it was a two-family, you're making a three.
Yeah, so it's designed, again, it's specifically designed with ADU for single-family districts or a single-family home. So if you were in the GR district where you could build multiple, I say, if I have the land and I have a single-family home and you come along to put an ADU onto it, this kind of defeats the purpose because you can actually build a second home on there. So this is for the GR districts that, again, probably eighty-five percent in this town are basically dead land, they're in GR, but they can never be built onto.
Okay. There was one other, but I'm not gonna delay it, and it's not a biggie anyway, so, okay. Uh, anyone else on the board before I open it up? Anybody from the audience?
Evening, board members. Chairman. My name is John Lee, I live at two thirty-five Lincoln Road. I'm also on the zoning board of appeals. And right now, we have an in-law bylaw. And we get about, about ten a year for the in-law applications. And they've worked, there hasn't been a problem. I don't know of a single case where somebody was not approved. But it goes through the public hearing process, so all the neighbors get to understand what's going on. If this pa- if this passes and you remove the in-law, it will not allow, there won't be a public hearing and neighbors won't find out about it until somebody's swinging a hammer, building a new structure next to them. Also, I gotta just say, this, as I listen to your questions, I, I've been having a lot of the same questions. This whole, uh, bylaw is, in my opinion, very poorly drafted. The, it's not clear, it's, and I'm gonna go through some of the points. One of the things, um, according to this, it has to share a common wall, and then other times it talks about being on a lot. So I'm not sure if you could have a accessory, one of these dwelling units, separate from the main house, or does it have to have the common wall? It's, um, it's not clear in the, in the bylaw. Also, parking's not defined. What are the parking requirements? When, uh, somebody comes to the zoning board currently for an in-law, that's one of the things that we look at and we make sure there's adequate parking. The whole over fifty-five and, uh, Mr. Conroy, you identified, um, what about a young couple that wants to move in, uh, with, with somebody and, and all this? Again, it's, it's poorly crafted, it's, uh, it's not clear. And really what it's gonna do, it's gonna create, uh, two-family homes throughout the town. And I don't think that's something people, you know, when they buy into a single-family neighborhood, that's not what they buy into. The other thing is, um, on this purpose, where it gives the purpose on this, it talks about, um, you know, what the purpose is. Provide for property owners over fifty-five and also third degree of kinship. Well, that's the purpose. That's not part of the regulations. So I'd have concerns with this, that somebody could come in and say, well, that's the purpose, but it's not regulated. That's not the regulation. And then, um, the final two points I have are, um, currently it's, uh, separate utilities are not, um, you need a special permit if you're gonna have a separate water meter. And this doesn't address that at all. And as I was sitting here listening to your questions, it occurred to me, somebody could actually have a single-family home and build one of these and then split it into condos. And I don't see how that would not be allowed. So there's a lot of problems with this, but I, I'll just go back to the fact that we do have a bylaw, which is for in-laws, in-law suites, and it's working, okay? And I don't know, uh, the zoning, I do know, the zoning board tried to, over a year ago, make some tweaks to it. And I'll tell you this, the zoning board will never do that again because the hard work that we did got corrupted someplace in the process where next thing we knew, it was being taken out from a special permit to as of right. And we spoke against that, I spoke against it at town meeting, and it didn't pass. But this is, um, you know, I think unnecessary, and I think it's gonna create a lot of problems for people throughout the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No. Just like, oh, doesn't listen.
Judy Conroy, uh, four fifty-five Elm Street, member of the zoning board of appeals. I stand to oppose this article as allowed as of right in all single-family zones. This type of change in a single, single-family neighborhood should remain by special permit. The special permit procedure is a basic legislative practice that provides the highest level of review and control for the town. One that provides flexibility to enable projects that are exceptions to the general zoning rules. I'll boy with the process. The special permit process begins with the filing of an application and the notification of a butters by advertisement and first-class mailing. At the scheduled public hearing, a butters and the public have the opportunity to review the design, to determine the impact on surrounding properties, to review issues related to the character of the single neighborhood, single-family neighborhood, and review the input from all town boards, like police, fire, and board of health in the public eye. The process ends with a decision on the case. Keep in mind that the zoning board cannot arbitrarily deny a special permit, but it can impose reasonable conditions. At this point, Mr. Chairman, I do have a few questions for the sponsors of the article or the authors. I just wanna know what's changed over the past few months to make the move from accessory in-law suite by special permit to a new thing called an accessory dwelling unit now allowed as of right? What is the driving force behind this push to such a different approach to permitting the accessory in-law units? You're throwing the accessory in-law by law out, and now we're gonna call them accessory dwelling units. Were there issues or complaints by applicants who have previously gone through the process with the board? I don't recall any, but if there were complaints, I would have certainly hoped that someone would have informed the chairman or the rest of the board. So if, if someone could answer that, Mr. Chairman, I don't know who.
Patrick?
No, it was, um, the language of accessory dwelling unit is just a consistent language with the state regulation. So the definition that we took is from Mass General Law, chapter one, uh, chapter forty-eight, section one A. So it was more or less making the language consistent with how the state would define that particular use.
Thank you. Since I've been a member of the zoning board, we have heard over a dozen cases for in-law suites. And typically, the applicant is the homeowner, and they attend the hearing to explain their project, and they might bring their builder to explain some details. No applicant as yet has had to bring an attorney with them to, to the hearings. All special permits are granted with decisions rendered the same night as the hearing. On occasion, an applicant was asked to continue the hearing and return with either missing information or corrections to their plans. At the finance committee, there was a, an issue raised last year about additional cost required of the homeowner. The special permit fee is two hundred dollars, plus in a butters fee list for a dollar fifty per butter, advertising in the local paper for two hundred dollars. If, if that's too much, maybe we can look at the fee schedule. But the building permit fees certainly add up with the electrical plumbing and gas fees that they, that they have to pay in order for these additions to proceed. Any design plans and other information that the building inspector needs is not considered extra material and is also, but it is used for the, um, special permit application. In closing, the special permit should not be looked at as a barrier, but as an open process to reassure that neighbors and a butters, in each case, that each case will be carefully reviewed, and that there will be opportunity for these neighbors and a butters to be involved in the hearing process. Um, I am gonna add a footnote. When we talked about the purpose in this current article, the definition of purpose is a reason for doing something or for allowing something to happen. I don't see the purpose in this particular article as fitting that definition. The, the bylaw that we currently have does not have a purpose. Last year, we brought something forward and we crafted and drafted what the purpose was of an in-law suite. To provide opportunity for family members who live in close proximity but separate from other family members to remain with the, within the family environment. Two, to provide for health and safety concerns of elders or disabled family members, and to protect residential stability and single-family character of the single-family neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, I got one last question. I'm going back to purpose, so A and B are not joined at the hip. It's either or. Okay. Uh, if I read A, provides the property owner with, with an opportunity to age and place, but, but right there, it doesn't say they gotta live there, does it? And B, it says provide living space for relatives with third-degree kinship of the owner of the primary dwelling unit. So if I own the unit, I can let my kids live there, but I can live in another part of town or I can live in Florida.
No, so if you, again, with, it's, it's the same as what the in-law was. The primary owner has to be in the house.
But B doesn't say that, though. That's where I'm going with this, Jim.
Yeah.
Just provide living space for third-degree kinship of the owner of the primary dwelling unit. If I own the house, I don't gotta live there, I can be in Florida.
No, if you're in Florida and you're not living there, then we're not gonna issue this.
Why? Because it says, it doesn't say I have to live there. That's, that's where I'm going with it.
Number six.
I know, number, that's where I am, you got.
So in the, down through the field, it does state the, the primary residence. So the purpose, from zoning point of view, um, when you do purpose, it, the purpose is based on what the intent. So again, like most of our zoning that was created, some zoning was created a few years ago, some zoning was created twenty years ago, some created was before I was even born. And you go in different towns, you go, the first is the purpose or the intent. What was the intent of it? And that's where you start your zoning. When you're looking at zoning, forgive the zoning article, when you get to, uh, when we're enforcing zoning, or when we're asked in front of these boards to speak, the first step is what was the intent? And are they meeting the intent of zoning? So the intent of this article, um, from the board is that it went through, again, that's your truth in com. It went left, it went right, went left, it went right. And this is what they're coming back with. Keep the second third-degree kinship for an in-law. Um, the ADU, that's a wording because the state have approved ADUs. The town can fine-tune what an ADU is. When something like this moves forward, the vote is a fifty-fifty vote. And because everything that Patrick and the board saw last year, everybody was, I want no kinship, I want kinship. I want to be able to rent it, I don't want to be rented.
But what I will say, Jim, is, and like I started out, is you were at one meeting for about an hour with the finance committee who is not in tune with all this, and you just had people just, that isn't where you should take these. You shouldn't be taking it from one meeting with a board that has no background or in, in it. To me, if, you're gonna, only good reason you're gonna take it is you wanna get it through them because they have the main motion. And that is, that isn't my way you should be doing this, but that's all right. And what you said about the intent, I deal with every day. I have architects saying, well, my intent was to put a wall there, but you didn't show it. Yeah, but that's my intent.
Yeah, but zoning is different than.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, I point this stuff out because you want them like this. There's no wiggle room. Do you know what I mean? That's.
That's the whole thing. If there was no wiggle room or zoning was clear, we're trying to make it as clear as we can. But if there wasn't, we wouldn't have a lot of zoning attorneys around making a lot of money, arguing back and forth over what the intent of zoning is, what their opinion of zoning is, what. Again, I appeared in front of this board, appeared in front of other boards. What I've stated my intent of the zoning is, the boards don't agree with me, the applicant doesn't agree with me, the neighbors don't agree with me. I can just give what the intent is, whether people agree or not. That's the, and that's why this, again, I do understand you're saying that, uh, it's not just sitting an hour in front of FinCom. It's not. This went through, I believe, last year with the zoning board. We took some, I believe Patrick took some of the notes with the board from the zoning, brought that forward, and it came back as a fifty-fifty split. We tweaked it a bit with the select board, and it went fifty-fifty again.
But what never came out of all of that was this ADU, that just come in and dropped in. But one last question, I promise. Under use regulations A one, we're talking about lot, it says only one accessory unit may be created within a single-family house or lot. So does that mean you don't have to attach it?
No, you have to attach it.
Then what, to me, it says you gotta create within a single family, I understand that. Or lot. So you could, it almost reads like you could create it remote from it.
So the purpose is, it's new, so a new creation, so you have a single-family home or a lot. So if you're building a new single-family home, you could propose doing an in-law with that new creation of a single-family home.
That's, that's why there are lawyers in this world. Okay. Anybody, nobody else?
Uh, one quick point.
Okay, go ahead, John.
In the same section, you have A one, eight, three, four, five, what happened to two?
Two's still there.
Two's where? I'm looking at use regulations, you have A, and then you have numbers one, three, four, five, six, there's no two.
All right.
So your page has been fully copied, charted, and first of all.
That's John.
That's one, and number two.
Ah.
Yeah, I saw that too, John, the one we got from Kate, and I'm like, where's the two? And then I got the official one, and it's there. Bad copy, copy machine. So it is there, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, that beats, all right.
I thought you were just missing a number of reasons.
Motion to close the public hearing? Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. Make a motion to all those that, uh, not support, what is it, Kate?
Favorable action.
Yeah, make a motion for favorable action on this article. There is no number now, but on the ADU. So all those in favor of favorable act?
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye.
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 So one, four, zero. All right, and that one's done. Next one is the private petition. Oh, you need that to back, Kate? And Brazil Mass General Laws, chapter forty-eight, section five, will hold a public hearing, uh, August seventeenth, which actually got pushed at the request of the applicant. And we continue to tonight at seven oh one. And, uh, it's proposed amendment to Walpole zoning bylaws, and it says, first one is amend the scheduled use regulations, table five B one four, section five eight and fourteen, in order to amend the requirements for medical marijuana treatment center and permit and establish requirements for marijuana establishments. And the other one is to amend scheduled use regulations five B one three dot Q in order to add clarity to the requirement for garaging and maintaining house. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. Ha, we're doing, that's the wrong one, we did that the other night. All right, sorry. So whoever will speak at this?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, and Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Peter D'Agostino, uh, with an address of one hundred Franklin Street, suite four oh four in Boston, here on behalf of the petitioner Group Pre, who's joining me this evening, Walpole resident who filed the, um, citizen petition. If I could, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of, um, housekeeping things. We had submitted a few weeks back a proposed motion under this article for the board's consideration. I just wanted to make sure we're all working from the same document.
No.
Would you like that?
No, we can't.
What, what do you mean?
Mass General Laws, you have a public hearing. We get it from the selectmen, we advertise it, we can only deal with what's advertised. This is all what the, the people in the town have been noticed.
Yeah, this, this is, this is, there's no additions to this motion. This is, um, all within. This is all within what was advertised.
Well, then I'm a miss. If you didn't change anything, what are you doing?
We removed some things, but...
Well, you changed it.
Okay.
You can't... The way Mass General Law works is, you can't change them. They can change at town meeting, Finance Committee can change them. We don't. We just give the public hearing based on what you have.
Right.
So we vote this up or down as it goes. When you go to Finance Committee, I think you already been, right?
Oh, we're going back, yeah.
Yeah. And when town meeting, they can change anything they want. All we are is a sounding board for anybody in the town, in the public, to hear what's advertised. So someone may have read the original and says, "Yeah, I'm not coming," or someone says, "So they're not coming," but then you change it a little. That's the whole purpose. So we can only hear what's been submitted. And the other thing is, I don't know, has anybody told you this is a private petition, correct?
Yes.
Have you got the people who signed the original to change?
We're not changing, just for clarity, and we sent this to the moderators, but we're not changing the article. The article establishes the subject matter of the warrant, and then there is a motion under that article. We are proposing, in the first instance, the motion that we submitted to the board.
Okay, but it goes back to, it almost is if you change A to R, but something like that. If there is any word changes, it's considered a change?
It's not a change of the article.
It's this wording change?
But the article establishes the subject matter, not the language of the motion.
Whatever you submitted, if it's changed...
We're happy to take you through what we submitted. No problem.
Okay.
We may, I guess what we'll run up against is, we may have already made some changes that we'll hear from the public this evening, and that's fine.
Okay. Now, one other thing that, I don't know if you've done it, I don't know if anybody in the town's done it, is we don't have too many private petitions, and when you submit them, you get 10 people to sign off, right? Now, if you go to modify them through your own volition, I'm not sure how that process works, whether you're gonna get them to initial it, or how that works. My advice would be to check it, because everybody's... Zoning is tough, because we gotta go by Mass General Laws.
Right.
So whatever they do on the football field or whatever, the high school, we can't control. But we report, give to what we had, how the vote was, and it goes to Attorney General. They're the ones who goes down to make sure, did you have enough time? Did this change, did this change? So it's kind of out of our hands. My point to you is, it might behoove you to find out if, in fact, you had to do anything, or what you did is... I hate the word dominion, I've heard too many lawyers say that. Is it that it's not a big deal?
Yeah.
So that's my advice to you, is...
No, I appreciate that. And then that's why we sent it to moderator. I'm fairly confident that we did it the right way, and I appreciate those comments. We're happy to go through it, what was filed. If any of the comments we received tonight we've already addressed, we'll note that.
Yep.
We did prepare, on the advice of the FinCom, a seven-page PowerPoint that just gives a very brief outline. We sent that earlier to the board. Would you like me to distribute that to the members?
Yeah.
For their review?
Did you present the zoning, I mean, FinCom yet?
We had an informal discussion, because I wanted to...
I was there right after you for the... But has this gone to them yet?
No, no.
Okay.
I think we're back before them in a couple weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anybody from the public that wants one, I'll just put them in there.
Now, if you want...
You need more paper, yeah?
If you want to use this to reference, it makes a lot easier.
I will, yeah.
Because this is all...
It's a lot.
Yeah.
So that's why we made it very simple, seven pages. Generally speaking, starting on the first page under background, as the... I guess I'll go back one step further. In 2012, Massachusetts voters passed medical marijuana. Subsequent to that, the town of Walpole adopted zoning that allowed for medical marijuana facilities, which was required by that law. So the town had to do it. In 2016, the voters passed adult-use marijuana, and in that case, there was a provision as to whether or not a town wanted to adopt it locally. So while it was made legal across the state, towns could choose to opt in or opt out, for sake of a better term. The unfortunate part, and we're on background, is the voters in Walpole and across the state, they had to make the decision in 2017. So it passes in November 2016, it becomes before the town in 2017. At that time, there were no regulations at all. The Cannabis Control Commission didn't exist. There were no stores that opened. The first store didn't open until November of 2018. And so town voters were faced with taking a leap of faith and hoping for the best, or banning it and revisiting it later. Walpole, along with approximately 50% of the communities in Massachusetts, chose to ban it and allow the industry to establish itself prior to revisiting it. So that's just a very brief background, and that applied to every town. Everybody had to make the decision before there were even rules. We didn't even know what we were dealing with. Since then, the industry in Massachusetts has grown, and it just crossed $5 billion since November of 2018. There's been over $5 billion in cannabis sales, resulting in approximately $150 million in tax revenue to the 180 to 190 communities that have adopted it. So with that being said, we felt as though Group Preet, who's a Walpole resident, would like to do this business here in town, felt that this was an appropriate time to revisit with town meeting members and with the town and the boards generally. The boards and the town meeting now have the benefit of an industry that's been operating for five years, $5 billion in sales across, all across the state. No one had the benefit of that in 2017 when they had to make the decision before. So that's part of, and this is just in pages 1 and 2 in the background, that's part of the background in Walpole and across the state as to why now? Why are we revisiting it? Because it was banned then, and there's an opportunity to do it now. The proposed amendment, just at very high level, is very similar to the public hearing notice that you mentioned. It does two things. It allows adult-use marijuana establishments in certain zones within the town, specifically BHBLM and IND. And then it also updates the medical marijuana definitions to align with the new definitions that have passed since the town adopted this zoning bylaw, and it expands where those medical businesses can be located as well. So that's a very high level as to what it does. We have worked on the zoning bylaws with a lot of communities. Me personally, in Outerboro, Kingston, Natick, I've done all the adult-use marijuana zoning bylaws in those communities on behalf of a citizen petition typically. In the case in Natick, we actually ended up working with the town, and in the case of Outerboro, we actually worked with the city council. So it's been a very collaborative process for me with many of the towns in the area that we've worked with. These bylaws, in many ways, adopt the best practices from those communities. Over the last couple of years, many communities have overturned their bans and/or expanded their zoning. Outerboro is a great example where they had originally prohibited adult use, then they allowed it in the industrial zone, and then last year, they expanded it to include their central business zone, which is Route 1, essentially. So towns are continuing to evolve in this, and part of the reason why I went before you this evening. The primary impacts for this at the town level would be tax revenue, obviously, as it relates to other impacts, whether it be noise, odor, traffic, things along those lines. All those are addressed in the proposed bylaw. The limits on them, all of it required by special permit, so it would all go through that process. There's no by right allowances here, and certainly, noise and odor can't leave the property and all those kinds of things that we would typically see. And then the last page is just a map of the proposed districts. So that's inclusive of all the districts, just to give kind of a high-level overview as to where in town it might be. If there's anybody that needs another one, I'm gonna give these to you. So with that, Mr. Chairman, just for the sake, I know the board's already been here quite a while, and you have quite a bit on your agenda. Would you like me to go through this specifically, or would you like me to start with questions from the board? Would it be more agreeable to you?
I gotta read a couple of comments from...
Sure.
And also, it's, I'll see what the rest of the board wants to do. I see what you want to do. Okay, the first one I got from the Board of Health, it's their August 15th meeting. They voted unanimously that the Board of Health would require its own regulations and permitting should the amendment pass.
Yes.
So just so you know that, I'm sure that happens in every other town. That's a copy. And they do have, where'd it go? A letter from a former member, Sarah Khatib. And rather read the whole thing real quick. And what Sarah said is, she had voted for it originally, because she thought it was fine, but what her issue is right now is because every district that you propose in is next to residential.
I missed the last part.
I'm sorry. It's, what she's saying is, where you wanted to have all these allowed use, they have a lot, most of them are residential, and that's her concern.
Okay.
I know, once upon a time, we, it's like liquor stores or something, there's 500 feet. It doesn't say it here, but I understand what she's saying. So basically, she didn't oppose it because she voted for it, but she's just forewarning that she doesn't support it next to Plinton School if you're in a residential, so...
Yeah. There were some, there was some language in here to push it away from schools and things like that, this included.
And I'm not, and you've done this before, and I don't know how articles, whether that's considered, if you did agree to it, whether that's considered more restrictive, those get booted, as you know. You can make them less restrictive, but I'm not sure which way it goes. The other question, I don't know the answer, I never had this in any zoning article, but you know, I assume once the town votes it and we put it in, that's it. But I don't think this is the first time anybody's tried to change something the town meeting have a vote on, as long as I've been doing it.
This is the first time a town meeting, a what?
It's the first time I've ever had a town meeting vote that didn't want to do this.
Right.
And it's put in a book, and then it comes in and now wants to redo it. It seems a little bit different, where the whole town voted, goes on the zoning book, but now it can come back and it's voted by 150 members of the town meeting. Just a little difference.
Oh, you're talking about the procedure?
The procedure, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. No, it's a great point. So Mass General Law, Chapter 94G, allowed for certain provisions for the banning of and allowance of adult use. This is an important point for Walpole, actually. So Walpole was what was considered, under the law, a no community, meaning Walpole did not pass adult-use marijuana in the general election. So the way that the law was set up is, they looked at each town. If you were a no town, then you can ban it at town meeting, which is what you did.
Yep.
To remove the ban, you had to go back to the ballot.
Okay.
And that clause sunsetted December 31st, 2019.
Oh.
And the reason that clause sunsetted is the talking point by the legislature, so I'm just reporting, this isn't my position, was that they felt as though there would be enough turnover in a town that it could go back to town meeting and not require a ballot initiative. So that's just the process established under 94G, but it's an absolutely fair question. Why did we do it one way before and not...
Because if I were a town meeting member saying, hey, we all voted for this, why would, I'm against it, why would I vote again?
It's just the process of the law.
Sunset clause changed all that.
Okay.
Correct. All right. I'll start with Paul this time.
Yeah. My, you know, again, I'm still new to the board, still trying to learn, you know, the bylaws and stuff like that, but, you know, this is gonna sound funny. I have gone into an establishment like this in Sharon. I mean, it's, I mean, it's just for more intrigue and anything like that. Sorry, Mom. So, but...
Two in five billion others worth of people, so you're okay.
But, um...
Then with the McDonald's, but that's all right.
But I mean, you know, I mean, I have to say, I mean, it's, you know, it said something about, you know, control, you know, traffic and things like that. I mean, you know, when it was popular, right? And again, just driving down Route 9, I mean, there was a line in Brookline.
Yes.
You know, I don't necessarily see it out this way.
Right.
But let's just say, it become, I mean, how do you control that? I mean, what, you know, where does it say that you couldn't have? Because again, you're gonna know that that is an adult-use, you know, marijuana shop.
Correct.
You see a line out the door.
Yeah.
How does that make our town look?
Yeah, you're right. I mean, that was certainly the initial reaction to the new industry. When people think of traffic lines and things like that, we think back to Northampton and Lester, which were the first two adult-use cannabis stores opened on the entire East Coast. And it was a little bit of a nightmare, traffic-wise. But that was a long time ago. There were only two in the entire East Coast open. Now there's some open in multiple states throughout the East Coast, and about 300 open here in Massachusetts. So we, quite frankly, just aren't seeing those lines anymore anywhere that I'm aware of. We represent a law, clients and bosses, none of them have lines. In that same way that Brookline certainly did, and I would agree with you, it was certainly challenging for Brookline at the time. But with 300 locations across the state, as well as other states coming on, so cannabis tourism is a very big thing, because people travel from where it's banned to where it's allowed. But there's many, many more states now that are online. So between the two, we're just not seeing those issues. However, the protection for the town is that we would still have to go through a special permit and still have to do a traffic study and demonstrate that the traffic volumes are what they say they are. One interesting fact as it relates to the special permit, your question specifically, is when I first started doing this in 2017 and 18, there was no ITE standard for marijuana retailers. So it was wherever the heck the traffic engineer guessed, to be honest, and then whether or not we could all agree that was sounded about right. But there is ITE data now. Marijuana retailers is a use within the ITE traffic book. As you know, IT standards are established based on actual observations of those businesses, so they're not conceptual. They take averaging of observed traffic trends and then put them into the book. So it speaks to the evolution of the industry and how those things are now able to be addressed in a much more traditional way, where before, we were taking our best guess, and even the board was taking their best guess, because we didn't have that kind of engineering data that we have now. So I think this bylaw does a couple of things. One, the environment's changed significantly, that we're not seeing those issues. However, we now have the engineering data and the protections within the bylaw to, you know, have the appropriate traffic evaluations done during the special permit.
What is the legal age? Is it 21?
It's 21-plus to work or visit. And so dissimilar to a liquor store. Liquor store, you have to be 21 to purchase, but you could bring your child with you. I have young kids, I can go into a liquor store, my kids can come with me, they just can't buy it. In a cannabis store, no one can enter the facility if they're under 21. So you can't bring a minor, you can't, even if they're your child, you can't waive it. It's not allowed. So it's different in that way.
And if this was to pass, um, it says to not exceed the 20% of the number of licenses issued within the town?
Yes.
Um, is that, I mean, so are we, are we limiting on if this becomes this, you know, this gentleman opens up, I mean, how many more can come behind it?
So you have, uh, based, let me give you a little bit of background. The, what the law says is if you allow marijuana retailers, the floor is 20% of your liquor licenses. So you either choose to ban them, which you can do, or you can allow marijuana retailers. And if you allow it, the lowest number you can allow is the 20%. So in this proposal, we limited it to the lowest number you legally can allow. What that means for Walpole is it's two point something, uh, stores, which rounds to three. So the most you could have in town is three, under the proposal.
Three stores, okay.
And that, and that's the lowest amount you can legally limit to under the law, under Master of Law Chapter 94G.
All right, Kate?
So you drive down Route 1 South and every billboard advertises a place to go.
Yep.
Um, I read an article recently that said the market's saturated and it's not the big moneymaker it was when it first came out. So what's the need for this?
Yeah, it's a great question. Um, the reason that you see the billboards everywhere is that, um, communities tend to do zoning in groups. So if you look across the state, we have areas, pockets. This is allowed, this is banned. This is allowed, this is banned. So it created quite a bit of saturation. If in the case of Northampton, they had 16 stores, I believe.
Was it 16?
Yeah.
16, 16 stores in one town, uh, because they didn't put a limit on it. And so what you're seeing in areas with oversaturation of businesses, those stores are struggling. But when we look at the state as a whole for retail businesses, uh, the retailers for the last three consecutive months had record sales. That ultimately is a good thing, and here's why. The reason why sales, record sales are beneficial is it because we are pulling people out of the illicit market where drugs are not tested, they're available to anyone, they're not regulated, they're not taxed, anything, and we're pulling them into the legal market. So that, the customer base in Massachusetts has grown exponentially with month over month, June, highest ever, July, higher than June, highest ever, August, higher than July, highest ever. More and more customers are coming in this industry as it becomes, uh, has less of a stigma around it and more and more people are open about their use of the product. And so the retail stores, other than in areas with oversaturation, aren't struggling. The articles, many of the articles you see, I, I can't think of one that isn't this way. I've tried to read them all, but there could be one. Um, when we talk about, uh, the, the market collapsing, what we're really talking about is at the manufacturing and wholesale level. So what happened was, um, everybody went into the pipeline at the exact same time and everybody came out at different times on wholesale, on growing, on cultivation. And retail stores, because their build out is much shorter, they were opening quick, very fast. Cultivation facilities take years to build. They're opening very slow. So those initial cultivators didn't have enough supply, the prices were very high and the demand was very high. So there was a really an imbalance. People rushed to fill that imbalance, but then everybody came out of the pipeline at the same time and there's an oversaturation of cultivators and that market is struggling deeply because there are too many people on the supply side. With that being said, as we look at these retail stores, they're not experiencing those same issues with the sales in the way I just described to you. So the market is growing from the perspective of more consumers coming out of the illicit market and that's the need.
So the problem you have with me is I am not in support of it. And in addition to that, I am an RTM and a poll worker. So I think that when people come up to the polls, when we ask them something and have them vote on it and ask them to make the effort and vote on it, although the RTMs are there to represent their community, if it went to a larger election and the larger election voted it down, the only people who in my eyes should take that away is the larger election.
Yeah.
I don't feel it's appropriate for town meeting to vote it in, even if I were for it, because I don't think that's right. We asked the voters to come out and vote for it.
Yeah.
Um, people, it's an effort when people vote and they're making a statement, so I, I can't support it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate those comments. I, I guess the challenge we have is just the mechanism within the law established both the time people voted it and the way you just described in this. I will say though, Walpole didn't vote it at the ballot, they banned it at town meeting. So we would be following the same path in which it was banned to remove the ban. Some towns did go to the ballot to ban it, but this isn't one of them. And so I, I think it's a fair comment, quite frankly, it's just the mechanism of the law. But we are being consistent with how Walpole voted on it the first time with how they're contemplating voting it out this time. If, if, and not that it sounds like you, you know, it's not something you would support anyway, but, and I appreciate that comment, um, but just for the, to, to that comment, we are being consistent with the same body voting it last time that would be considering it this time. So I, I, I hope that at least.
We had a lot of public hearings, meetings about it, you know, and.
Yeah.
You know, that's all.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay, Phil?
Yeah, so you're saying it was not before the, the town elections? I thought it was question four, if I looked at the wrong question.
Question four was the general legalization of adult use cannabis for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
Yeah.
That wasn't the vote as to whether or not it would be banned within the municipality.
Oh, okay, okay.
Two different, two different vehicles, yes?
Thank you, just want to clarify, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I, I think I, I liked what Sarah has suggested, you know, just try to limit it a little bit where, where it could be, obviously it can happen here. Um, and I do have concerns over the, you know, I, I know you're saying that the retail side's not oversaturated, but it does, you know, just for.
There are areas where it's oversaturated for sure. This isn't one of them, but yeah.
Now, what, what is this, was there any substantial change you made in what you just, you know, the, the draft, we're not considering that draft, but what, what did you?
It wasn't what I would consider substantial. A lot of the original draft incorporated, um, elements of the, uh, Master of Law or regulations. And so what you had was the, uh, Special Permit Granting Authority also serving as the regulatory body. It was a lot of, we, we weren't involved in that initial drafting, um, but that tends to create, uh, having done quite a few of these, it creates a significant issue for the Special Permit Granting Authority because they are now charged with reviewing something that they don't have oversight on. Because even if they had an opinion on it, the state would supersede them. And so the, almost the universal majority of our changes removed things that are overseen by the Cannabis Control Commission and left in place the things that a Special Permit Granting Authority would consider. So those were, those, if you put a big bucket around it, that's the bucket of changes.
Okay, yeah, I, I saw that. So, so basically you're saying though, that this passes, we could, that Walpole could get three, three cannabis retail.
That would be the legal minimum.
Yeah.
That'd be the legal.
The, yeah.
So we limited it to the legal minimum.
Yeah.
The town could vote to allow more, they couldn't vote to allow less.
Not, no less, okay.
But in this proposal, we put the minimum that's allowed.
And, and are a lot of towns doing more than the, you know, that?
I would say 90% do the 20% legal minimum and 10% of the towns go beyond that. And it might be less than 10%, very few go beyond it.
Yeah. And I know with the Finance Committee hearing, you said that the town gets some revenue from this.
The, the town can get a, a local tax, it's an excise tax, 3% excise tax? Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
John?
Uh, just to follow up on that last question, is the 3% an automatic tax? Or is that something the town has to go out and, um, pass a bylaw for to?
The town adopts the Chapter 40N, don't quote me, I believe it's 40N. Uh, the town adopts that taxation at a town meeting and then it's, and then from there it becomes automatic, if that answers your question?
Yeah.
So it's, it's collected at the point of sale, sent to DOR and DOR reimburses the town dollar for dollar.
Um, I think my main issue is the locations you're looking for. Um, right now, the medical marijuana is the only one and that's only lit, allowed in the industrial district, industrial zone.
Correct, yeah.
Uh, right now you're looking to, with this article, expand the medical marijuana into highway business, limited manufacturing, and on the latest version, which we're not looking at, business, which we're not looking at.
Yeah. Um. That, that was in the original version. In the text, it just wasn't in the chart, but the, we didn't change what the text.
And now with the addition for the marijuana establishment, you're looking for special permit zoning for industrial, limited manufacturing, highway business, and again, business.
Uh huh.
I, I agree, it needs to be somewhere. My question basically is the business section, because that's one more likely to be mixed in with the residential areas.
Mm-hmm.
And I can't read this map too well, but I know one of these little spots here, this business, happens to be a couple hundred feet from the new middle school.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure how some of the other schools line up on it also, but.
So there's separate language in here that establishes buffer zones?
Yeah, you're right, I think there is something I saw.
Yeah.
Um, hmm, let's see.
So it's in 5B.
5B, okay. Within 500 feet, okay. Um. Yeah, so again, I'm looking at what we have set up for vape shops right now.
Uh huh.
And that's only allowed in industrial.
Right.
And similarities between the two, two products, I have to say, obviously different, but the same idea of, and having, giving people enjoyment, I suppose. Um, so I think, I'm not totally against the idea, but I think we need to limit more where it's allowed. I think business, the business zone in particular is what I'm thinking, doesn't really belong, um, for where these are. Highway businesses, you're not gonna have kids walking by it. Limited manufacturing tends to be more off by itself in industrial. Um, I think a lot of industrial in town is in swamps or something, but that's, you know, in fact. So I think it's more of a question of where it's being put, rather than it's being put someplace. So that's my biggest objection.
That's great feedback and that, you know, that's, you know, really helpful for us to understand.
All right, um, I got a couple of things. One of them, you mentioned Northampton, I happened to be there the day it opened.
Which one?
Northampton.
Okay.
Went up to a job at Smith College, I come around and like, what's this? There was.
10,000 people?
Yeah. We went from hippies to guys with suits on, it was unbelievable.
Yeah.
And.
Certainly, yeah.
And the Brookline, I know a couple cops that had to work there and, and, and what I understood at the start is one of the things, I know they always had the police, the traffic, one thing, it's all the cash that they worried about, Brookline.
Yeah.
Um, and I know it's like anything that opens new, it's like a new restaurant opens.
Yeah.
And then wanes off. I see the one in Millis on 109, I go by it every day.
Yeah.
And once upon a time they had parking and they had this, it's all gone.
Yeah.
You wouldn't even know what it is anymore. So I understand how that's going. The other thing on the 20%, that's good if you get the first one in here, nothing like limited your, your competition.
Well, it would be three.
Yeah, yeah, but you're still, if you said 50%, yeah.
Yeah.
So I understand that.
The town can go up, we just didn't think it was appropriate to assume they'd want more than the minimum.
Yeah, no, I know, I understand that, but it's, it's also protective, but, you know, whether, I don't know how necessarily these work, but, um, I assume three's more than enough. But, uh, the one thing, and it's still going, you know, it's been voted, it's this, I'm not a big proponent of it, don't need to, um, but it is allowed. And I'm looking from a zoning perspective.
Yeah.
You know, if you're selling beer, I can say the same thing, but I still look at a zoning perspective is, and the only thing, and it was brought up originally by Sarah Katiib, used to be on the board, and I think everybody here has mentioned the same thing. I'm not in favor only the way it's written because what I would think, what, what I would recommend if it doesn't succeed or you get something released, let's talk to the police chief.
Yeah.
He'd be the one, and so if you went forward with this, because it's legal and all that, I'm not gonna argue that.
Sure, sure.
It's, it, say we're just spotting a convenience store.
Yeah.
Where would you say we could do it? Where would you think the best place? Where's the worst place and the conditions? Because it, you know, it's pretty, kind of comes down to the cops. So if you had the chiefs, you sat with them and you went and said, not in the business like John's talking about, the Conner High Plain and, uh, Washington Street, because a little, yeah, no, we can't go there. If we go down here or we keep it away from here. One of them is the, um, East Waffle's considered business, I think, right? It's down by the church. Well, you're getting limited by the churches. But I guess what I'm saying is.
Far end anyways.
If you, if you, my advice is if you walked in and says, yeah, this is what we sat down with the chief and we've identified where these should go in representation of what they have felt would be the best places, that would be.
Uh, let me ask you a question and if it's something you don't feel comfortable answering. When we did this in NADIC.
Yeah.
Um, we had initially contemplated some zones and NADIC zoning, if you haven't had the opportunity, I encourage you to read through it sometime. It, it is layers on top of layers.
Oh, yeah.
It's very, very complex with all the, yeah. So we had originally contemplated zoning in the way this is contemplated. And then in collaboration with the town, where we landed was more along the lines of what you're saying, but what we, what we're really saying is an overlay. Um, and so we did, uh, an overlay district, which then, because there are, I think most people would agree, probably places within the business zone that would be appropriate. People would say, yeah, I can, I can support that, but I wouldn't support the whole zone. Um, and so I, I just throw it out there, is that something that, you know, Walpole, you know, something they've contemplated, they do, I, I heard Patrick talking about it earlier as it related to MBTA, um, that's another approach we, we could take, certainly.
My only, my only suggestion is you're gonna try to get it from 150 people and you have the guy, the head of police, and he says, yeah, it's legal, but I'm finding the best place for all of us.
Yeah.
And how would you object to that if you're one of the people? If you don't like it, you're gonna vote no.
Sure, got it.
But if, if, like we're digging up tonight, like John said, well, what about this? Oh, yeah. Those are the things at town meeting that just kind of will knock the wind out of you.
Yeah.
But if you walk in with what the chief has said and overlays or however you structure it.
Sure.
It might be places in town that, you know, you don't want in the business, it doesn't make sense, like up on 27th.
Right.
And the support of him, because I think that's key. Um, you know, like I know you don't have in the central business district, but certainly next to the vape shop and, and 7-Eleven, not the greatest place because kids hang out there. But I think I'm saying it over and over, but if you had the support of the chief and you sat down with him and he says, yeah, I think these will work the best.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm not the chief, I know one place that probably worked the best is up by Mc Morgan's on the other side there, Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, you look at something like that, it's away from everything, it's probably where you want to be.
Yeah.
You don't want to be in the.
And that's where they end up going, but I understand your point.
Yeah, if, if he says, yeah, this is where we're gonna, an overlay or however you want to do it, I think you'd get the support of people who are, I'm worried about kids, not like, I don't like marijuana. I know you're gonna do it, you'll have a lot of people like that. But I think I said enough, I saw that.
Yeah.
So anyone else have any questions, comments?
And, and then just before we turn it over to the public, would, does the board consider, um, as a motion this evening, just hearing the board's comments, does this board and every planning board's different, uh, make motions for a referral over, uh, not, not favorable action? Or do you just vote favorable?
No, we, we, we have another one called referred back to committee.
Yeah.
So if you don't want to go forward, our advice was, and it's up to you, to, to refer it back to committee.
Yeah.
So that means, yeah, and you have the right to pull it back and, uh, before you go forward. So we can make, if we made the motion of support or we made the motion of non-support, that's one thing, goes to town meeting. We've done it in the past, I think you heard, tonight with, uh, the ADU, which was an in-law, we say refer it back to committee when there's so many moving pieces. It's not, it's not like, we, I can't vote for or against it without seeing something from the zoning.
Mm-hmm.
So when you start to get that vibe, it's sometimes you're better off just saying, okay.
Yeah, just hearing the comments, you know, I mean, we want to find the right path. I think some of the comments we heard around, uh, you know, the general application of the business zone is an example. Uh, you know, it sounds to me, uh, you know, my, my interpretation of what I heard was that it's maybe not the worst time to talk about it, but we'd want to tighten up where it could go a, a little bit more in, in the form of an overlay probably is, would accomplish your, you know, what you're suggesting, where we could literally have the chief pick.
Yep.
Sections of town. Um, and so, you know, one thing, uh, having done this enough, I, I don't know a lot of two-thirds votes without the support of the planning board that are favorable as it relates to a citizen's petition. So I think, you know, if there's some openness, it sounds like there's an openness to having the discussion, uh, maybe, maybe the board consider that motion to refer it back to the sponsor.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, again, it was have an issue with that. The problem, as you know, you're gonna wait two years. Yeah, I don't, I don't think any of us have an issue with that. The problem, as you know, you're gonna wait two years.
Not, not on a referral?
No, no, I know, I know on a referral.
So Jeff, just one clarification.
Yeah.
You, you don't have to wait two years if on reconsideration, the planning board votes to approve it the second time.
Would, they would have to come back and show us it's different.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, but if we have a referral back to the sponsor, we would then not have a no vote.
Do, do referrals are safer.
Correct. And so if, um, if town meeting, if the, if this board voted to refer it back to the sponsor this evening and town meeting made the same vote, we could come back at spring.
Well, actually you can, if you don't want to even get to that point, because town meeting could say no, they could vote it down. You're dead.
Yeah.
If, you might test the waters and then just polioatical whatever the time limit before town meeting is. No, we want to pull it back.
Yeah. So we'll work on that. Uh, but I just saw, offer the board consider maybe a referral instead of a no if, if there's some openness there.
All right. My own opinion is I'm looking from a zoning wise. It's already legal, so refer, that wouldn't be a problem. A no would be no good for you.
Right.
And a yes, but it may be split, doesn't help you. So does anybody, anybody have a problem with doing the refer back to committee as we call it?
No.
All right. We call it refer back to committee.
I, I, I'd love to hear from the public, but I just wanted to, in case I didn't have the opportunity to come back up.
And typically refer back to committee means it's almost there, but not quite perfect.
And that's why I'm here tonight. It's, it's okay to have the conversation, but we need to work on a couple of the corners and we're happy to do that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to. Oh, I'm sorry. I asked and I didn't see.
I guess you did ask.
Yeah. Anybody? Kyle? Kyle, you want to know when it's opening? Is that it? All right. I'm, I'm, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? Aye. All right. I'll make a motion to refer back to committee. Do you have a second?
Second.
A second from John. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Five zero zero. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Board.
Thank you. All right. Next up. Bristol Industrial Subdivision Site Plan. With the hour being well after 7:05, we have a continued public hearing for Bristol Industrial Subdivision Site Plan. Continued hearing 2301 and Bristol special permits continued hearing 2302. With it being open, since it all kind of merged together, we will take them together. So, um, what do you, John Fetterman? A lot of people didn't understand that, did they?
Not unless.
I hope you did.
Pennsylvania.
Yeah. Where's your hoodie? It's the first thing I thought. It's like, Fetterman's here. All right. Here we go. Now, we have, I'll read Kyle's because that's the last thing we're on. Most, everything we've done to date. Wayne, everybody's had their say, so I think we're corrected. And Kyle, do you want to do this or what do you, how do you want to do it?
Sure, Mr. Chair. Um, I did give the board a memorandum today, um, and in that memorandum, it indicated that almost all the revisions we had requested, both on a conservation review and planning review, had been, um, accomplished. The applicant did a nice job of summarizing the changes to the plans in a letter dated September 12th, um, to the planning board through Kate Delaney. Um, so, and I will not reincorporate that, but basically most of the changes on here are all to do with construction detail. In my memorandum, I cite about 11 items here. A lot of it's drafting and, um, details that have been sifted out of this review. And I also indicate that it seems perfectly, um, logical to me for that those could be accomplished before the endorsement plans are done. So essentially we're, we're, I'm very good with this set of plans.
We're at the end of the road, huh?
We're at the end of the road. Correct.
A long time. I miss you guys. Okay, other than Kyle's, we had nothing else, right? Okay. Um, so we have, do we have any, um, we apologize after we do decisions. Oh, there it is. All right. Um, I open them individually. We're kind of hearing together, but if I do close them individ- uh, is one thing we can't close is, which we may be done after would be your special permit site plan and I'm looking for that one. Which one is it? Site plan?
It's gonna be withdrawn.
I understand. We, how, we got two special permits?
Yep.
Okay. All right. I'll make a, uh, motion to close the site plan.
Second.
A second, Phil. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And what we have here is that's typical standard conditions and special conditions. Here's, we got some right here anyway, and conservation order, land disturbance permit is incorporated decision. All comments by the deputy fire chief will be on the final plan. All off-site work improvements proposed to board will, will be part of this approval. Applicant will enter a license agreement with ever source to proceed with a portion of work within their easement. Applicant should complete the top coat, paving the roadway sidewalks within 100, 120 days of the issuance of the last billing permit. At the applicant's discretion, four-foot concrete with wire mesh may be utilized within the project. All right. Applicant and its successor shall designate person to work with mosquito control. Annual gutter cleaning shall be conducted during the spring. It's not the time I do it, but yeah, fall mark, yeah. It's after you already got the water damage. Water fountain will be installed, maintained in the wet basin. Three biological tablets, brackets will be on all the catch basins and all conditions will be made as part of site plan approval. And number 11 will be all items on Kyle's memo of September 21st indicating items that need to be put on the plans prior to endorsement. That's number 12. Okay with you, Kyle?
Yes.
All right. That being said, uh, and we have our standard conditions, so I'll make a motion to approve site plan 2301.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There you go. What's our next hearing so we can do the other two? All right. Special case 10C. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I keep forgetting. All right. We have a special permit 10C, case number 2302. We'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
We have a second from Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. All right. We have a, this is the, uh, special conditions, um, that the conservation order be incorporated, the land disturbance, deputy fire chief. Everything we had before and including Kyle's will add that to it. So with that being the case, um, I'll make a motion to approve. Now, I should have said it before, but Paul, we've always been told you can vote if you're not the deciding factor.
Yep.
Okay, so if it's, so just to, just to for one, you know, the four zero, special permit has to be at least four zero, so. But you can vote on this because it wouldn't matter if you voted for or against. We still gotta have four of us, so. Make a motion to approve special permit 10C. We have a second from Phil. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So you're gonna go for it, Paul?
What's that?
You can vote if you want.
I'll, I'll, I'll vote.
Okay. And the final one is special permit, uh, on section 12. Make a motion to close that hearing. A second from John. All right. All in favor? Close it?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, special permit is talks about modification on section 12, 3C5. It's only by law to render impervious more than 15%. The total impervious area was 16%, so. And the Conservation Commission's order conditions should be filed and land disturbance, uh, permit should be also part of this. Um, we don't need yours on this, Kyle, right? Yep. Because that's coming on the site plan.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I don't think we need that. So we got them one way or another. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second from Kate. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. So one, two, three. All right. Now, what are we gonna do?
Maybe we have a three-month extension on the industrial subdivision to cover the appeal period. And then also, you'll remember there was the, um, section six, um, we were dealing with the building commissioner and also the ZBA with respect to that small addition.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, all right. And what was, where were we up to, Kate?
Uh, it's the end of this month. It's going to expire, um, on 9/30.
9/30. Okay. I'll make a motion to grant the extension on the industrial subdivision up through December 31st, 2023.
Second.
A second, Phil. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. What's next hearing? Thursday at Christmas?
Our expectation would be that we will put an end to that by correspondence with Kate, hopefully. So in that instance.
You're not gonna come visit?
In that instance.
Okay, but when though?
Soon as, as, within three months.
Will I be dressed in my Halloween costume? My pilgrim costume? Or Santa?
Santa.
Oh, you're funny.
Jack, December 25th, December 21st, we probably wouldn't meet, so we'd have to go to December 7th.
Well, we give the extension through. So we'll, we'll continue this till December 7th.
Great.
And 7:05. Okay?
Great. If, uh, we don't return again, uh, thank you very much. It has been a pleasure. We have enjoyed.
Should we make that a stipulation?
Thank you, Carl.
Congratulations.
Make that a stipulation that you gotta return?
Absolutely.
Actually, you know, I want to come back.
Was it Ravens Nest? They like us now.
I want Scott Golding to make an appearance.
Well, he's watching right now from Castor.
I already told his mother last week, I said, the only way they're gonna get this done is if Scott shows up, gets, drives from Maine.
It's December 7th.
Okay.
Kayla's on him to do that too, so let's go.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Did I give everything back, I hope? Okay. All right. Does anybody need five or is everybody else? Okay, everyone. Gee, Mark, you did a fabulous job. Jeez. If you got paid my word tonight, you're dead. What? Oh, recusing? Okay. That's yours? Oh, no, that's your own.
Sorry.
All right, Kyle's done. All right. Uh, the hour being after 7:10, we have a continued public hearing for Kearsage, uh, Knott Street, case 2304. With that being said, we're back in action and remember I want to speak. I do have two, new things from, uh, different boards. Like a reader, if you want to start.
Uh, I'll just go quickly. Hi, everyone. Rob Bukowski, Weston Sampson, representing Kearsage. Um, so following the last hearing, we were at, there were some comments from the boards and, and, uh, we also got comments from other town departments. So we resubmitted the revised plans on September 7th along with a letter, um, responding to all the different comments from the town. So, um, hopefully we've had a chance to, to review that and I feel like we've addressed all the previously asked comments, so, or questions, rather.
Okay. Uh, I have two updated correspondence. One from Chris Johnson, Town Engineer, and dated the 21st today, and he said, reference been made to a set of plans entitled Norfolk County Agricultural School Solar Project. Propose 5.0 megawatt AC max solar photovoltaic with battery store. All that being said, a conduit location plan should be provided with, when the construction plans are complete.
Yeah, so, um, we responded to that in here too. The electrical plans are not finalized. The conduit locations will be shown on those electrical plans, so happy to share those with the building and electrical inspector prior to.
And from Board of Health, dated the 19th, that they're meeting, they voted unanimously, that they have no concerns at this time. And that was it. Oh, here you respond. I'm sorry. I was looking at the other night and I forgot where they were. Okay, so we have those two. So with that being said, I went through these the other night and you've, you've agreed with everything, but one thing I did see, on here, which was the fire department and the, and the, um, the fact that you're gonna go with a gravel road.
Right. Yeah, so we've done, you know, collectively dozens, um, or more of these types of projects and we've never used an asphalt road. I mean, gravel can be, you know, installed in a way that provides a solid base that any vehicle really, I mean, during construction, um, tractor trailers are gonna be using that road. So, um, compacted gravel has worked really well and we do post-construction inspections as well at a lot of these arrays and the gravel holds up really well over time. In addition, we, we don't want to create any true impervious areas more than we have to, which would cause potentially additional stormwater runoff. So those are the reasons we're proposing to use gravel.
Okay, so what you're saying is you stick with gravel and aren't going by what the fire chief, he's now the fire chief wants. Is that correct?
Our preference is to stick with gravel.
I understand your preference. Of course it is. It's cheaper and everything else. But what you're saying is you're gonna stick with your gravel road.
Thank you. Andrew Bernstein, Kearsage. Thank you. Um, we'll meet with the fire chief and if he insists that we change to asphalt, we can do that. But we think that, um, we discussed with the county, we think it looks, um, better for the environment, that you're not gonna come in and, and pave something. So it fits better because there is an existing road right there, um, which is gravel. So that's our preference, but if it's a condition, if the fire chief says, I have to have it, then that's something we'll go ahead and, uh, work with.
Well, I would say, right now, you're gonna have to talk to him.
Okay.
That's what he wants. I mean.
So we'll, if the fire chief says that we have to do it, we'll do it.
Okay. Oh, that was, that was easy because.
It's, it's just something that we don't think makes sense cost-wise for sure, but also we don't think makes sense for fitting in the environment.
No, I understand the environment, but I, but just from someone who works with trucks all the time, if I'm way in the back and it's march and you got mud and those trucks on four-wheel drive and it's stuck, you're pretty much screwed for having a backup truck trying to get it out of there.
Yeah, I mean, we can take him, Kearsage has 70 projects. We've never done it, so we'll take him around and let him make the decision.
Okay. No, it's fine. I think you've been down the road and know the fire chief always wins.
Might be right.
You know, okay, then. That's a big one, so. And the other thing is it's what you agree on for road base and whatever he wants to do, because there's multitudes of, you know, how thick and all that, and that would need to be, uh, straightened out before we say okay.
The only request is, is it possible to add a condition that we, you know, put, propose the final road with road base asphalt section, you know, in accordance with what the fire chief approves?
Are we doing that now or after you talk to him?
I mean, whatever the discussion we have with him, I don't think it's gonna change, right?
Well, I'd like to have what he's gonna put on so we know what to put on for, for the condition. I don't want it just in case or something like that. That's about the only one that, you know, other member's gonna speak, but that's at least a big one I saw. I mean, it's just a matter of a couple of weeks and you're back, right?
Can we have this, uh, can we provide in the approval, this is a condition that we have an asphalt access road. This pad and agree the, agree the construction came out with the fire chief probably with building kind of thing issued?
No, I think we'd want to know exactly what he wants. So we, when we're done with this, we know what we're getting for road. That's all. I mean, you get it, it, I know everybody wants to go and if everybody says, I want to get in a hurry, I can take around the guys who are six, eight months or years later. But it just makes it simple for everybody. He's just met with the chief, Paul Barry, and boom, this is what we agreed on. That's what I saw in here, um, but I'll turn it over. John, I know they answered everything, which is one of the ones to do. I like that. Whatever we ask you guys respond to. Makes it easier for us.
I don't have any additional comments.
Phil?
Um, the only, only small question I have is the amount of acreage of trees being removed, I think you said was 1.5 acres. Otherwise, I have no questions. Yeah.
Okay. Kate?
Yep. And just so you understand, that's, we always go with public safety. So that's why we need that.
Paul?
Well, I have nothing further to add.
Gee, you agreed to it. I didn't have to give my fire chief's speech. You want to hear it?
No.
You don't get a choice. No, the only reason I say it is Gillette Stadium, that was built, designed, built. And they already occupy it. And you know the concourse there? Fire chief in Foxville says, I want a sprinkle. I said, no. Mass building code, no. I want sprinkled. Mass building code says, no. Who do you think got the sprinklers? And who do you think paid for them? Not Bob Kraft, because he bought a design build. Million and a half to the architect. You don't win against those guys. I think you might have been down the road before. So this way, every, it's all straight for us. Yeah, that just seemed to be the biggest sticking issue and it, and it, I didn't see anything else. Um, anyone else have any comments?
Just looking at the fire truck turning, right? They didn't have an issue with going into the other lane to make that turn.
Um, we've not heard anything back from the fire chief, but it's certainly something that if we're gonna meet with him anyway.
That might be something to check. I know a lot of cases, them moving, having to go into the other lane to make a turn has been an issue.
Yeah, that was an issue on a 40B.
Civil, uh, whatever.
Yeah, up there. Yeah, you should probably check just to make double sure.
If we're meeting with them anyway, we'll discuss.
Okay, that was another, on another project where it come out and they could not make the turn without hitting the other lane. So I don't know how they deal with Knott Street. One of the problems with Knott Street, especially up there, you know, it's a scenic road. So you kind of, unless you've got a Volkswagen, pretty much everything coming out of there might go over. So, um, I don't have any, you guys got anything? No? Kind of boring night. All right, um. Yeah, well, we need extension, correction, extension up through October 31st. Yeah, well, we need extension, extension up through October 31st. Yeah, okay. Well, I'll make a motion to allow the applicant an extension up through October 31st, 2023.
Second.
There's a second. Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next meeting, will they make it in time?
It's October 5th. Our 7:10, which is our first meeting, is already requested to continue. It's...
Yeah, we can, and we don't necessarily need 20, I mean, 14 days because this is only one.
Right, it's nothing.
Okay.
Do you want to put the minute like 7:05 and then?
7:05 on what date?
Because 7:10 will continue, so.
Okay, what's the, what's the date?
October 5th.
Okay. We'll continue October 5th at 7:05. Okay?
Well, you need the same number of hard copies as well if we change the detail on that plan.
You can just put a revision with a cloud or however you want to do it and put it in here. Okay? Because typically we want 14 days so everybody gets to see it, but this is only one little thing that affects one person and we don't need to go out to the whole.
Okay, yeah, that was my question, is whether to print out all those copies. If we can limit it, it's always easier.
Yeah, we don't need, I don't need to see another. If you give at least, we're going to need at least a record set. So at least two.
Two copies, okay.
And whatever the chief wants, if he wants one for his record or however he wants to do it.
Well, we can certainly send a PDF, too, so.
And if you would, just update this book like you did and just, just so everything flows together.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. All right. On to next. I guess he's not here, so.
Sorry, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Kate, when do you want the revised plans by? If we get those to you by like end of the month or end of next week?
I'm not in any hurry because there's nothing really changing.
Okay.
It's not going anywhere.
Right, okay.
So...
The week of, the hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, just drop it off and, yeah, like I said, nothing's going on other than going thickness. Okay, thank you. The what?
The letter.
I'm looking for it. Oh, yeah, probably Kate. Yep, it's in the book, Kate. Okay. The hour being after 8:30, we have a continuing hearing for Warwick subdivision. And after that, I have a couple memos from some of the other departments and the police department on September 10th has no safety concerns for the traffic. From the Board of Health, dated 9:20, at their meeting September 19th, they voted unanimously that the board reiterate comments from last meeting, which stated the board approved the plan, however is not in favor of new construction with a 100-foot buffer. If the plan approved, they urged the applicant to work with Norfolk mosquito control for best practice in mosquito mitigation and institute regular cleaning gutters. And they also recommend sidewalks through subdivision. And we've got Kyle's today list. Go ahead, Kyle.
Okay, give me a second, Mr. Chairman. I'm catching up. Okay.
Well, you're catching up, Kyle. That was a great letter by Chris. It's like, it's just that one thing.
Mr. Chair, I did provide a memo to the board today. It's our review number five on this project. In that memo, I recapped, I noted the changes from the 6123 plan set, which was the last one that was reviewed, to the 825 plan set, which is the one before you. Quickly, a waiver has been added to the cover sheet regarding stormwater runoff volumes. They can't meet the volumes and the volume requirement in the subdivision rules and regs. Then I go on and note that several changes. We're dealing with changing the dimensioning on the box culvert from 20, the original 20-foot cross-section and this would all be, well, the original plans were 20-foot cross-section and a smaller culvert. So there have been some revisions to adjust it to a full 26-foot width cross-section. And then I go through the memorandum and explain in italics whether the comments were addressed. Some of the comments are brought forward. I've recommended a condition in there. We've also noted, and this was in the last memo, that there's work at number seven Wall Street and that we're not aware of any agreement with the abutter at number seven Wall Street. So there's some grading from the, from the construction onto number seven Wall Street. And then we brought forward some, a few new comments at the end, a lot of drafting things, a lot to do with the box culvert and reviewing some of the detail on that. So in general, there's probably one, two, three, seven, six, seven new comments with multiple sections at the end of the memorandum. If you want me to go through all my, well, but a lot of it is construction detail.
I know a lot of it's typically us. Is there anything of earth-shattering that you might want to point out or is it just?
Well, there's one unusual item in there and it deals with the subdivision and said, every source no longer provides poles and bases. So we're going to have to add that light pole basis and poles to the plans now. So that's a change from all the rest of the years that you've been doing the subdivisions. That's actually comment 41. Is there anything else earth-shattering in here? No. No, not really.
All right. John, am I going the right way?
No, I don't believe they have any additional comments at this time.
So did we clarify the legal question about the street, the road, and where it ended? I know that they provided a legal opinion and we're good with that.
Well, the, what is there is the town, it's twofold. The town took it all the way to the, what do you call it?
Urban.
Well, the abutting land.
Yeah, yeah.
But the road actually stops, the actual built road stops.
Before, before that.
Way before that. And there's always a little thing about the two-foot missing. It's almost like the town accepted it to this point, not all the way to there, but they only built it to this point. But the town owns everything when they did the taking of everything. So it's in the town control.
So we're good on that?
Yeah, we're good. That's, the town owns everything. So it doesn't, it doesn't matter where the road is because it's not built. So that's, yep, so.
Otherwise, I don't think I have anything new. Okay.
All right. Paul, you got anything? I know you haven't been here.
Yeah, I, Jack, I don't.
Okay, that's, yeah, I'm not being fair to you because you haven't been here.
No, no, no.
But I like them. Okay. All right. Kate?
All right, I just have to ask because I feel like this is dragged on and on. I said I have to ask a couple of questions because I feel like this is dragged on and on and on. And I feel like we come and meet and we just keep dragging it on. So my question is, when did we start hearing this? This was like a year ago almost, right?
Yes.
So why in the comments, and I don't know if this is for Kyle or for you or for you, but why are there so many comments that say, after several revisions, the plans still lack. I continue to recommend. Engineer did not respond. Not addressed. Engineer did not respond. Like, why are we still at that point? Is usually by this time, if it's a hearing that has to go this long, it's clean. This just seems like we're still chasing our tails in circles.
Well, Kyle, how close do you think this is?
I agree. In the, in the response, the response letter skipped several items that were on my last letter. So that's where the engineer did not respond comments are from and said, we didn't get a response from it. Some of the things were addressed in there and some weren't.
Well, we, well, like for instance, the comment is about the box culvert, looking for details. We've sent it out to the structural engineers and the designers to design that, which will come in with shop drones, which we generally wouldn't give until the time of construction. But Kyle wants more detail on that.
But that's not part of us, right?
No, it's outside the subdivision.
Okay.
It's in Warwick Road.
Yeah, okay, some of the stuff.
So what do we have hanging for us?
Yeah, okay, that's a better way to put it. We'll make sure we get all our stuff covered. Did that knock a lot of it out, Kyle? Just what we got? Little stuff on the subdivision itself?
So I don't really have the memo separated between the two jurisdictions.
Yeah.
Clearly, the waiver that's been put on the plans is for the planning board, all right, because they're asking for a waiver from the drainage calculate, for the requirement to mitigate both rate and volume in the subdivision rules and regs.
Yep.
All right. A few of the details in the new comment is pertinent. It's a matter of judgment whether, you know, they're showing grading on, on seven Wall Street, which is not part of the subdivision. We're not aware of any easement and it could be debated whether that's part of the subdivision or part of the new road construction within the public way because they meet at that point. So that may possibly be part of what's, what would be under the board's jurisdiction for approval.
So what's he saying? We don't need?
Well, we stop at the line. So anything beyond that line, I'm just trying to get a feel of what's on this side of the bridge. Culvert is a better one versus that.
Not much.
Not much on our side.
Yeah.
Okay.
Really, the short answer to that is it's mostly to, you know, to a couple of things that I did.
That's okay.
The, the comment about the light pole and bases would apply to the subdivision.
Pretty much. Okay.
So we looking to close this tonight?
Yeah, for clean. Yeah, you can close it. We're going to get it in before 11:00.
All right. Do you have anything?
No, no, that's, that's why I was asking Kyle because most of these seem to pertain to stuff that's not related to us. So.
So a motion to close it then?
All right, we have a motion. All right, motion to close by Kate. Now a second. Any further discussions? All those in favor of closing it? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. 5:00 to close. Okay, so hearing is closed. So what we got now in front of us is a subdivision, well, what we would call a subdivision. So the only issue is it goes nowhere. So, but because we haven't had the connection. So with that being said...
Say that again.
We don't get a connection. I mean, it can't be built as it is. So it's, it's, there's nothing. It never gets built, so.
Did Board of Health, did Board of Health and Conservation and everyone?
Yeah, they did, they addressed it as a subdivision. But right now, we have the, they have no connection to Warwick Road. That's the, that's the crux. That's why we're trying to separate. Stuff on our property is done, but there's nothing on theirs to connect to, so therefore.
You want to make a condition that it, that the working work has to be approved before the selectmen?
We already closed, we're closed.
No, on your condition of approval?
We're closed.
Oh, okay.
They closed it, nothing. It's only us to deliberate. So what we got now is a gap, so.
Because what, select board hasn't?
They haven't said anything. So, and there's no agreement or anything. So we could spend this another year. So there's, we got our nice little piece, but there's nothing here to connect to. This is kind of like being in an island.
Can't we do a condition on it, Jack?
Because we don't have any control.
No, because we can't condition. But what are you going to condition, Phil? You can't condition that later on down the road because it may never get built.
Well, then after two years or whatever, it would be, it wouldn't happen, right?
So they would need, they would need select board.
Yeah, but they don't have that. I think your point is how long we've been doing it and how much more, but who knows when that's going to come. You don't have any agreement with the selectmen, do you?
Not yet.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to just double check. So, well, we don't have a subdivision that we can approve. So hearing's closed, so.
I would make a motion that we approve it with conditions.
How do you approve a condition if a subdivision doesn't exist, Phil? That's my point. It's no frontage. They don't have anything to make this work. Kind of like the cop before the horse. Would have made more sense to have that all agreed and then we would have been all set, so. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the plan as submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of the plan as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
All right. So 1 for 0. Yeah, someday you come back with something built. I don't know if they'd ever get it, Phil. The other problem I got is that guy's house. You had a lot of balls in play, unfortunately. And I know the hearing's closed, but this is separate from the hearing. Kyle, my understanding with Conservation, you can only have one, you can have a crossing, but just for one lot?
That would be the limited crossing, correct.
Would this fall under it? Would something like this? And I don't mean to, but it's kind of fall, I don't know, never asked, I was just asking for you. Because I had that a long time ago with the John Hasselner lot and it would come down to the one. So I was just curious.
That's a good question.
Because I have a feeling maybe even if they got it from the town, he wouldn't have been able to do a subdivision because you only do one. That's the whole purpose. And the reason I bring that, what?
The culvert issue, the crossing.
Yeah, because the reason I bring that up, up by me, does everyone remember Joe Prue's hole, Starmont Farm? Part of it's in Medfield, most of it's in Wampel, 25 acres. He has a river. He has no other access. He knew he could not subdivide it because of that. Because everybody would have pounced on that property, that 25 acres. And the thing went pretty cheap when they considered, well, I think a million, but for a nice piece of property, but still. But anyway, so, okay. What? All right. Uh, clock tower, we going to do it?
Yep.
So our machine up there, does that mean they're starting?
Oh, yeah, I did see that. I don't know.
Yeah, Brad Murphy's machine now. He's probably doing the site work. Not that, I'm sorry, that's, I'm thinking High Plains Street. Do they start digging, John? Did you notice?
I haven't noticed anything.
Brad Murphy, B.C. Murphy, his trail.
It's been there for a couple of weeks now.
Yeah. But Brad Murphy does a lot of that site stuff, so I was wondering if he's doing it. I was wondering when that was going to start.
I was wondering if they do drive by it, but it's... It's just a house getting older.
Oh, and we, by looking at that is, once the grass gets that long.
So there are permits in for disconnects and then down for 173 High Plains.
No, okay.
So the demolition's underway.
Do you know if, or not just the tark, is Brad doing it, do you know?
Yeah, at least the disconnect. I don't know if he's going to do the site work.
I saw his trail up there. He's not going to mow that lawn.
No, they, yeah, no, they disconnected the, they disconnected water and sewer the other day.
Oh, good. There you go, guys. Is this all set, Kyle?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I make a motion to undo us.
Second.
The second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Whoops. Whoops.
You're going on the road.
Going to.
You're always going somewhere.
I have Nashville. Please someday.
How long?
Thursday.
Is it work or is it fun?
Bring a tip.
It's fun.
You could go up there. She's never been, so take her to downtown.
It's interesting. It's fun.
How come we keep getting water under the, uh...
Happened since 30 years.
Maggie was here, it was perfect.
Well, you could've delicated, lady.
I haven't heard of one, why is Stone Street flooded all of a sudden?
Oh, it is?
Probably not enough type, and it's not all of a sudden, that's been going on for 30 years.
Yeah.
We had a lot of rain.
Yeah, the other, the other...
A lot of, a lot of rain rapid.
What was it, Monday, when it rained like crazy? Usually the cops are sit there, because people's stupid.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at to make sure that things aren't closed up or sealed and cemented.
What about some stone was affluent?
We have school stain.
Oh.
Eight people killed.
Yeah, because right behind...
Come out the library and you're heading to Washington.
Yeah, okay, because right, right behind those condos, that's all wet.
You were on the corner, I was in the front.
It was, it was, it was parned all the way down, across, across Stone, even a little bit up beyond that, on the school.
Think about it, between this, behind there, flat.
Or was it you or was it them, someone?
Flat, and it's, I think only 15 or 18 going in, in Kewell Road.
I think it was them.
Had nothing to do with coming off of Allen's, right?
It was.
Doesn't Allen's flows into the block that, doesn't that go on Stone Street or through Diamond?
No, 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 Allen's goes right in here, it's all, goes under Diamond Street. Under the railroad, and then under Diamond, and all that.
Yeah.
The, uh... Didn't see any washouts.
No.
Do you gotta pay for those shirts, or do I pay for those?
She's a classmate.
Yeah, she's super nice.
Do they come like every week, like down at the, the garage?
No, there's thirty of them, and they're probably two and, two and a half years old.
You don't get, what's your name?
Carl, I have a, I have a question on the 1A project. They're, they're still gonna put a light in at the end of North, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, they are, okay, yes.
Nothing happened there, so I'm just, maybe wondering.
Yes.
That's why I've been looking at two, Phil, is what's the light? The one you really need it the most, and that whole...
They haven't done it, yeah.
Well, that's debatable too, but, you know, we, we had a long row to hoe, but fortunately, you know, DOT got both bullet and Fisher Street lit up in the last two, three weeks, whatever it's been, which is, I think, a big help. I missed, I wasn't present for the, we had, we had biweekly meetings, I wasn't present for the meeting on last Tuesday, so I don't know the latest, but there definitely was more work to do with the North Street intersection. Mast arms, the things that hold, the, the bases that hold the pole and whatnot, all that stuff is not in up there. The conduit's in.
Oh, it is?
Intersection's curbed out, built out in a line for it now.
Where they putting the mast foundations?
On the top of my head, I don't remember.
But it's, there's not much room.
I think it's on the North Street side, though.
Yeah. Oh, they only have one?
I think so.
Oh, okay.
And there, and there will be a walk, a walk light there, across it.
I believe it's there now.
Oh, a crosswalk?
Well, when they put the traffic light up, will there be a walk button?
Oh, yes, yeah, of course, yeah.
They always do that now, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I still don't understand why we have concrete instead of curb at the bridge. That's gonna get beat the crap with the plow.
Yeah, I don't know, that all, all went, that was all 20 or so years I was gone.
Yeah, and poor, trying to pull in a country kitchen is now very difficult. You got all...
Yeah, we're looking at that.
Needs a little, there's a couple of them that need to be done.
But that, that, you know, everyone's used to that, it's been open forever down there.
I know, but it is tight.
It can't be open because of the intersection. Yeah, we're gonna look at that, I'm going down there tomorrow morning.
Yeah, we got it open for Keihive, that's good.
They doing any business there?
Not, not in the last 10 years I've been gone, but it's, it's a perfect spot going in there. If the Keihive's open, you just go right down the alley. See, the Donut Boys got what they want, and Ash wants though, huh? They, they got a nice opening.
I thought that Donut, Dunkin' Donuts up on Route 1, they were gonna keep it open or whatever, didn't they?
No, they, when I saw the manager, I talked to him one time, and he says they hated to shut it down, because it was a great store, and they were supposed to knock the whole thing down, but then they came up all the way to keep it open during construction, and they had the guy, I drove by one night at like nine o'clock on Friday, I saw Billy that pulled in. The guy's working overtime, they're trying to get that, that's already open, that was the quickest one I ever seen open.
Yeah, it was pretty quick.
Yeah, because a lot of money.
Well, it's convenient, everyone's going back and forth for the one, you got the side street.
Well, now that thing moves right along.
That was the first one in the area.
What, the E models?
The Dunkin' Donuts on Route 1. In, in, in Wampole, that was the fir, they put that up in 1980.
What was there before?
Eddie's.
Oh.
Okay, tell me.
Gas station.
I don't think so.
Oh, yeah, you all remember? There was a girl in there who was blonde, about 26 years old, she drove a Corvette. You don't forget those things. It was a gas station, Eddie sold out, I think, to the gas station.
Good boys, good.
I never went into Eddie's. Any of you guys?
Are they together at school?
Thought you may have filled up that green over green, Country Squire, or LTV in there.
He wanted to go around.
All right, trivia, what was Eddie's last name?
Saglaski.
Very good.
And it's nice they're together.
Saglaski, his brother was Lenny, the Boston College hockey coach. What was at the Wampole Mall before?
A Red Rooster.
Oh, nothing there, right?
A field, but on the corner was a Red Rooster.
I remember one, one summer, Tom Lee Dalton, we had to go up and dig Frankie for his blood and fight that street.
Okay, we're fine.
Okay. But that's where they cut the trees.
No one's talking.
Well, waiting for you, Kate. All right, we gotta re-sign an A and R for Pemberton.
Yeah, motion to reendorse.
I'll make a motion to reendorse, and, or does it explain too what happened here? Kyle, you probably know better, this is the land court plan, right?
Correct, they had the plan, they prepared the plan and had endorsed by the board before they had gone and reviewed it with the land court. Evidently, the land court didn't like their fix, they called a fix of the boundary, so really, not much has changed on the plan, except for the little bound detail offsets, and I actually put the other one on the table with Kate this afternoon, or this morning, and we took a look and said there are some very minute changes. But the land court is particularly fussy about what monuments you hold and how you do your calculations and things. So it changed a little bit, they've come back for reendorsement, but it doesn't have any material effect on the plan.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reendorse, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Phil, all those in favor?
Aye.
Who reviews them, do they have a regular PE doing it, Kyle?
They have land surveyors, they have, well, court, land court engineers, they have a number of people. It's been a long, long time since I've been in there to do one like that, so I think anybody that I would've known is gone now, but they have, that you sit down and they go through your calculations and...
Not a job I'd wanted to fall asleep.
They're thorough. They make you do it right.
Thank you.
Oh, I did see Norfolk, what did I see? Oh, he was down at, oh, by Tresta.
Thank you.
Oh, Norfolk engineers.
But it's not Norfolk County, this is the land court in Boston.
Oh, Sp, oh, okay, oh, okay.
Yeah, not the county engineers, this is the land court in Boston, they have the technical staff.
I said he's sire.
Okay.
That class is good, you said.
Oh, that's right.
Master item, master plan update.
You were crazes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, first, I just wanted to respond, there were a couple of questions that came up at the last meeting, and you got to some changes. One of them was adding PAU to the list of planning work numbers.
I guess.
So that has been done, Judy did update that. So we put an end date for Sarah and a beginning date for PAU. And a few other changes were made as well.
What's your, what is the master plan update?
The big, the big question has been for us meeting with Judy, and I am proposing a motion tonight that we meet with Judy via Zoom on one of the first Thursdays of either October, November, January, or February. I know that we prefer, I know we, you know, discussed this, we prefer meeting with her in per, in person. I don't know if she responded to the letter that we were sending, but I can tell you that in several discussions I had with her, and I know Patrick has, and Jim has had discussions with her, you know, she is committed to this other project in New Hampshire. She is very willing to make time available to us by Zoom, but she's not able to travel and do both in the same night, so that is what she's offering. I will, I will tell you that she is flexible on which of the first Thursdays of the month, and again, she will, whatever time we need her, she's, she will be here for us. So if we did a Zoom meeting, she would be the only one on Zoom, so everything else would be in person in here. So it would minimize any of the issues with technology, where, you know, sometimes when people from the public are, are joining a Zoom call, there are problems, but, but, you know, we, we certainly do a lot of meetings here in Town Hall, where, where we have somebody on Zoom. I, you know, I, I think it's very important that we move forward on this. Again, I know it's not ideal, however, I think it will be just as effective. The, the planning board met for 22 times, I'm sorry, the, the master plan steering committee met 22 times with the full board, and we met six times or more with subcommittees. And, you know, we did a lot of work from the steering committee, and again, I wanna, wanna highlight, you know, Katie is a member, and also the rest of the members of the, of the steering committee, and also Judy and her team. I know there were delays, but, but at the end of the day, I think we have a very good product. The report does reflect all the input we got from the, the town, when we did our meetings, our surveys, and a lot of work went into it, again, by both the committee and by Judy and her team to, to, to complete the report, and I think it's very thorough. So I, I do make a motion, Jack, that we, that we select one of those first Thursdays of the month, and it could be October 5th, November 2nd, or, I wouldn't wanna see it going to January, February, but it could be January or February. And, you know, I think, I think that we owe it to the town, and I think we owe it to our steering committee and all the work that went into this, to get this project completed and to bring it, bring it to the town. So I really wanna urge, so, because I do make that motion, you know, and hope that someone might second it.
Okay, you need a second of a discussion, or just discuss, discuss either way, so, what does anybody wanna do?
Well, I, I can't...
I think we made a motion last time, and I think we should wait to hear back.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
Did we send that letter?
No, I didn't realize that I was supposed to write the letter, so the letter has been given to Kate, but she hasn't had time to send it, so I would say it will go out any minute.
Well, I think...
Both offices closed.
I, I, again, I, I'm strong about if, if we paid, if the town paid this woman a lot of money, she should be present. So, I mean, I'm, I'm for that, that's just kinda how I feel.
Okay.
We think additional effort should be made, to see if we can get it.
Well, my thing...
I'll see if we wanna get the lien finalized, yeah.
Well, my feeling is, we're supposed to do it, and we, and we have someone working for us who says, no, I ain't coming, I'm gonna do it Zoom. No, and we've never met her, she's never been in front of us to explain it, especially at the end. That ain't the way to conduct business. Well, I got a question for you, how many meetings did you guys have with her? Forget Zoom, but meetings, public meetings with her?
I don't know the top of my head, I'd have to go back and look, but, but we, you know, she, before COVID, both, all of our meetings were in person, and then when COVID came along, everything changed. So she was with us, or her staff was with us by, by Zoom.
I got started after.
Again, there was a little period of time where, where we, she was not able to meet with us, but...
Okay, because I read the contract very succinctly, it says 15 to 20 times public meetings, which means not Zoomy. Zoomy didn't exist, Zoomy's not recognized as part of a public meeting, so she owes us some meetings, but the more importantly, this has got our name on it, we don't even meet the author of it, I have a, I have an issue with that. The other thing is, what I read, or the emails you gave us, is it said that she couldn't do it until January, so I assume she should be able to show up in January for us.
No, she, she's, she has a year-long commitment in New Hampshire, I don't, I don't know any details about it.
What's wrong with that, like, why does that supersede our commitment?
Yeah.
Like, she signed a contract with us before in New Hampshire.
What I would suggest, Jack, if you should give her, you should give her a call, then, because I can tell you...
Well, the other thing is, the town just signed up for the MBTA. Am I missing something here? Right? She's been signed for, didn't they sign up for the consultant for the MBTA that Pat Duchesne showed us tonight? For 50 grand or thereabouts?
I believe so, yeah, I don't, I don't know for sure, but...
To me, it's like, no, she just didn't wanna come. She's that busy, but she can take a $50,000 project.
She's willing to come, she's willing to come another night, if you want to suggest another night, not the first or third Thursday of the month.
No, she can come, she can rearrange her schedule, I can't believe it's that mu, much fixed in stone, but, Phil, I've worked for bosses all my life, I call them kings. You go to the king, king don't go to you. We're paying her, she's under us, she should, and to me, that's shown a sign of disrespect, that you guys, that I don't matter, you don't matter, none of us matters. I'm just gonna do it in Zoom, and if you don't like it, pff, so.
It's a lot easier for one person to alter their schedule than for five.
Not to mention, like I said back to, she signed a contract with us, she knew our meeting schedule when she signed the contract. Why is New Hampshire pushing us out?
I don't understand why she's...
When you have a project, you know, there were times where she canceled on us because something else conflicted, so why, just like she canceled on us, why couldn't she cancel on them once?
Yeah, so my...
I'm not being disrespectful, and Phil, I'm not, it's not directed at you.
So I have two suggestions, I, I think, Jack, if, you should call her and, and talk to her yourself.
Wait for the, wait for the, what do you call it?
In second, in second, I do think, you know, for, for the benefit of the town, you know, we might stand on principle and say she has to be here in person. I do believe that can be just as effective to have her on Zoom. I do believe that this is a very important report to get out to the town, a lot of work went into it, and I, and I think, you know, it's crazy to delay delivering this report to another month, many months. I don't see this changing anytime soon. You know, we didn't, you know, so, so anyway, so, so I'm, I'm urge, I'm urging the board to reconsider, I know you have very strong opinions on this, but I do as well, and I do urge you as members of our board to be a little flexible.
Can I just say something, I mean, my thing is, by the time you get her here, let's just say she comes in November, right, and we say, okay, it's all right for Zoom, when's town people gonna really take a look? I mean, even the holiday season, you're gonna send me a book and I'm gonna consider When's town people gonna really take a look? I mean, even the holiday season, you're gonna send me a book and I'm gonna consider it? I'm not, I'm not gonna, something like that. I wouldn't even consider it after the first of the year. So I, again, I, I don't want to, um, I don't wanna, um, look like there was no work done. It sounds like plenty of work done. I didn't know the amount of work. But, you know, again, I applaud you for all the, you did and so forth. But to me, townspeople are not gonna take a look at this at the end of the year. You, you keep stressing that you've gotta get in the hands of the town people. The townspeople are not gonna know anything. It's gonna be the holiday season. They're not gonna care. They're not gonna care, right? So if you, if you say she comes here, it sounds like maybe January, we don't know that.
She will not, January, February, she's not available January, February, or March.
Jesus, it keeps going.
Phil, it sounds like you know more than what you're telling us, that's all. Because you, you seem to have had more intimate conversations than what you're laying on. So you, you're telling us absolutely guaranteed this woman is not showing up on a Tuesday, on a Thursday.
I can only report what she has told me. And like I said, I, I suggested Jack give her a call. Um, I mean, I can't, I can't do, and again, other town officials have also talked to her. So, um, so that's where it stands. And again, I'm, I'm looking at this, you know, I really wanna move the master plan report forward. And true that people are not gonna look at it over the holiday season, but there's a number of other steps that, that are gonna have to happen after we do our vote on it. And, you know, I, I just hate to see this, you know, kicked down for.
Phil, why don't we meet somewhere in the middle to say that, again, if this woman is that adamant that she cannot meet, you know, all the way till, say, April, May?
But last meeting, she's, last meeting, am I incorrect in saying last meeting? You said she couldn't meet till the first of the year?
No, I said, after the first, after the first of the year. I didn't really know what that was. But she, I did ask her, would you be willing to meet on an, on an, on a, a day other than Thursday? So she is, so she is willing to do that. She, I mean, again, I cannot, she has this commitment. She's willing to.
She has a commitment to us also. She does. And I'm sorry, I understand that. And I'm not yelling at you, but she has a commitment to us also. And she had the commitment to us before. So the fact that she, it's, it's, I don't know. I, I feel.
If she's so committed, I still don't understand how she could take another job with us.
Yeah, I don't know.
But I cannot, I cannot speak about that. Again, my, my whole emphasis is I wanna move this forward for, I believe, for the good of the town. I hate to see this, you know, at the very end, stymied in, in, in whether we meet in person or Zoom. And I, I agree it'd be better if she was in first. I'm not arguing that at all. Um, but I just, I, I feel this is very important to get it out. And true, the people may not look at it over the holidays, but, but I, I'm, I don't know when this will get out otherwise. So, um, so there it is.
Well, why don't we, Phil, again, you've had a conversation with that. This is what she said. I think, as you've suggested, right? That a letter needs to be sent to her, maybe another committee member needs to speak with her and be stern with her.
I don't think I should.
No, being stern?
No, I don't think I should speak with her.
No.
Jack is too nice.
Yeah, I know. I just, I just sweet talk. I should sweet talk me out of everything.
Say you want a Jolly Rancher if you came down.
Um, okay, we'll, we'll throw a few things out here. First off, Phil, you're putting the bum's rush on us like it's our fault. This thing has been in place since September twenty-one.
I'm not saying it's anybody's fault.
But no, you put the bum's rush. Now it's, this thing is laid out there forever. And now because we can't get her here, we should bend over and say, okay, whatever you want, Judy.
We're not, we're not, again, my point is, it's not, I'm doing it for the good of getting the report because I think it's valuable for the town to have it.
Now you're going, you, you're starting to plead, pull out.
That's what I've been saying all along. I don't.
Phil, if it was that important, why wasn't it done a year ago?
Well, we, we try.
The committee was formed in, in September twenty-one.
Yes.
So with, with two years.
Yeah, so that's not unusual for, for, um, master plan, uh, projects, you know, to go more than a year and a half. However, the history is, not good. I, I, I avoid going through the history because I don't think it's very positive to go back and say, why didn't you do this? Why did this happen? To me.
I always go back to find out what, what caused. What I don't like is when I'm pushed to the wall and I gotta react be, this thing called the five Ps. And I don't care if I say it on T V. Pitbull performance on your part doesn't constitute an emergency in my part. And that's what I'm looking at here. And more importantly, what's this master plan? What's the date of the master plan supposed to be?
You mean, when is it supposed to come out?
Yeah, what's the date?
It's gonna be, it's, right now it's twenty twenty-two, is that?
No, no, that's wrong. The master plan is updated every twenty years.
Yes.
So it should be twenty twenty-four.
It, it's, it's actually in, it's very, it doesn't really say exactly.
It's a twenty year. No, it reads twenty years. Every twenty years you're updated. So the last one was done in two thousand and four. So this one can be rolled out at two thousand and twenty-four. They don't do master plans every eighteen years or seven.
No, no, but well, the important thing is it has recommendations in it that it would be good for the town to have. For example, when we look at the MBTA, um, zoning. We should be looking at that from a perspective, how, how do we want the town to be? What's, what are we, what are we looking for, for our, our longer term, you know, when we look at zoning, for how does everything come together? So, so that's the reason for the master plan. Um, so, so I don't, I don't think it does us any good to say we're not gonna do this for, for months. And again, I, I'm not defending any, anyone. I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm being very practical. I'm not trying to put burden on, on, unfairly on the planning board.
Another question is.
Yeah.
We still haven't done our own recommendations, correct? So she's still gonna have to redo something, right?
When you say, you mean the planning board hasn't done.
Yeah. So she's, once we're done and we have changes, she's gonna make those, correct?
Anything that, yes, I mean, that, that would happen. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that.
She's gonna do it.
Yeah, and I'm hoping, um, since there are two members of the planning board on the, on the, on the steering committee, I'm hoping that, um, you know, and this, again, there were a lot of input that went into this.
But if we have issues, it's our plan. So if we wanna change something, we still have, we're still supposed to change it, or we can change it.
You can, yeah, the planning board votes on it.
It's, everything's a draft until we get it and we make the changes, we vote it, done, right? That's a procedure?
Um, you, you, I'm not sure if planning boards often make changes, but, but the planning board.
She's gonna, we have something given to us. We can make changes and she's gotta revise it.
She's making changes right now.
But she's gonna make changes to our changes when it's presented. Oh, so we can't even.
She's making changes now.
She's making changes now?
I'm not saying you can't. Well, I added the things that you requested at the last meeting. I added Paul Smith and I put the dates.
We, but we still have to, once she's done, then she has to say, I'm done. Now you guys can review it and give me your comments back.
It's, it is in the purview of the planning board at that point.
Okay, I do hope.
The other change I had her make was I put on, so, so I, one other correction. At the last meeting, I, I said that we, the, uh, master plan steering committee voted eight zero zero. It was on June twelfth. Um, we did get the minutes done. They've all, they've been posted. The actual vote was nine zero zero, so I just wanna to clarify that. That date is now on the master plan cover, that, you know, that the, the master plan steering committee voted.
All right, now, I know she only has eighteen hundred bucks. That ain't enough to keep anybody's interest. For her to come to a meeting and her to revise these and, and she gotta provide thirty final copies. But we'll see. Maybe she'll honor her contract. Eighteen hundred bucks.
She's been changing things right now as we request them and.
But I tell you what, that is the way I run my business when stuff comes in. No one's getting down to the last one percent because you've got a lot more to do. And those copies and everything, you gotta do worth a lot more. You gotta keep someone's interest, I guess, so to speak, like retainage, Kyle, right? Keeps it so. All right, well, we'll wait Kate's letter and, and see where that gets and ask her for response and we'll take it up the next time. And if we get a response prior to that, Ms. Delaney will send us all a copy, right, Kate? All right? So we'll do it like that for now. Letters all set? Do I need to check the spelling?
Yes.
Ooh, ooh.
I can't spell.
I know.
Ooh.
I know.
I'll save that on public television. I cannot spell.
I guarantee you there's nobody out there. Other than your mother. And she's just shaking her head. Where did I fail? I should have let her stay at Blessed Sagoma.
Stop. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.